Pass, like it usually is.
That was for you. It is five thirty six P M.
And we're all here.
Uh, yes, I'd like to call this meeting uh into session. I'd like to entertain a motion as we advertised earlier in this week. Uh, to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing pending our potential litigation and personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Ben, second Bobby for the discussion.
Should we do like the pledge and everything after?
We'll do that after, yep. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, we enter executive session at five thirty seven, likely will be out in about thirty minutes. Thank you. Okay, uh, it is six twenty seven. Um, entering a motion to end executive session.
Motion.
Uh, Ben.
Second.
Bobby, which is by the way, the same exact uh motion and second. The first one, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Executive session ends at six twenty seven. Uh, at this point, we're gonna go through our normal uh opening the meeting, so I'd like you uh to please stand if you're able for the uh pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please, as we think about those who've come before us. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Malley. Trustee Patton. Deputy Mayor Ryan. Mayor Allen.
Here.
Trustee Bushner.
Present.
Trustee Pine. And Trustee Lewis. Attorneys Engel and Gups.
Yes. Do you have the the Natty Bumpo information? Uh, a few announcements and correspondence, and I actually wanna start with one that I don't have here. Uh, if you have not seen the commemorative bench for Ann Borns outside here, it is beautiful, it is wonderful. Thank you to uh Neil Stoll and the D P W guys who helped with the installation. Uh, thank you to Scott Borns and uh Ann's family um who made this happen without any expense to the village. Uh, it's just a beautiful thing, and Dave, uh, is it Beegan?
Yes, Beegan, yes.
Who who was involved with the stones, it is beautiful, it is just absolutely right and wonderful, and uh, it was very emotional the first time I sat on that, so thank you to all those uh folks involved. Um, and and take a look at it if you haven't seen it on your way out tonight. Uh, Natty Bumpo Day, July thirteenth twenty uh twenty nineteen, learn about the legendary character in Jay Fenimore Cooper's famous novels. Um, watch as we complete the last chapter that was started by our forefathers over a hundred fifty years ago. So one P M on the first, at the First Baptist Church in Main Street in Huesick Falls, they're gonna be um um getting a commemorative sign and and walking through um our wonderful historian, town historian Phil Leonard will be walking us through this whole thing. I've invited him here actually next meeting to give us a little bit of a rundown on what this all means. And the next meeting is a few days before this event, so we'll have a little presentation from uh from him, but it's gonna be unveiling of the New York State legend and lore sign. Unveiling of headstone for uh Nathaniel Shipman, who's the uh the uh real name. The individual, take a self-guided tour of the old burial ground where some of our oldest settlers will be highlighted. Historical tour of church building, display of Jay Fenimore Cooper novels. And learn how eighteenth century woodsmen lived off the land, uh hunting, trapping, and fishing. Very, very cool thing, so I'm gonna pass it around, make sure that's out there. Uh, we are still looking for two more people to serve on the zoning board. Um, we did have one person express interest, but they don't live in the village, so she could not serve. Um, and the village is looking to hire summer help uh to work with our uh Department of Public Works, interested parties should contact the village office, so. If you know any students.
How many uh do you need?
Well, he needs more now, cause we're we're down somebody right now. So normally we take two, but we may be in a situation where we wanna take three this year.
You're looking for primarily college kids, right, or uh kids coming from school or out of high school?
Eighteen above because of the use of.
The electrical and the equipments.
Okay. And I do have um a couple other things that um I'm gonna be adding in to various parts of our meeting, but I'll sort of uh allude to those as I go through my updates. Um, my first update is this was in a very insane past month, um at at the school job, I had a five-week uh run of eleven performances, so I'm still playing a little bit of catch-up, there's still some people who I owe some phone calls to, um, I have reached out to a couple, I'm getting the rest of them hopefully done this week. This is my last crazy week with our award ceremony on on Thursday, but after that, it's full speed ahead, so there's a few people who I I've been trying to get caught up uh with and getting in contact with, but I have not yet, so my apologies on that. Um, as we talk about the Highway Garage Grant and the sewer project, both that are through M R B, our engineering firm. Uh, I did wanna state that I had a meeting with uh Rich Deguita, who is the project head um for the sewer project, and uh Bill Davis, who was a higher up with an M R B on past Friday. Denise joined me for it. Um, we have had a lot of bumps in the road, uh this meeting was really about making sure that we can move forward with things, I'm gonna give you updates that are specific to that. In terms of the Highway Garage Grants, uh we had four um contracts uh that went out to bid the general contractor, the elec- the electrical, the HVAC, and the plumbing. Uh, the HVAC and the plumbing were both um only had one bid response, and that was um with um a a a firm out of Vermont. And there was an issue that came up um having to do with the specs, and Andy, feel free to hop in and correct me if I get this, but I think I have all the all the details right here. Uh, there's an issue where the insurance carrier needed to be uh an insurance carrier that is uh authorized to do business in New York State. According to the Department of State. Um, Andy called that that was not the case, uh we had a lot of discussions back and forth. Um, even had a a form sent to sort of sign off on 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 that requirement, which we as a village and with Andy's guidance, uh, were a little bit awkward about because this is public bidding, and there's a certain certain amount of integrity that we have to have with that. Uh, so uh Rich of M R B reached out to Dasny to run the situation by them. And Dasny said that not only would they not um be able to sort of do that situation or or pay that, this company is not even authorized to do business in New York State. So that means that the HVAC and plumbing contracts will not work. We only had one bid response, it was this company, so normally if that were the case, we'd go to the next person, but there is no next person. So we are now facing the situation where unfortunately, and with yet another delay in the same Highway Garage projects, we need to go back and put out uh rebid the HVAC and the plumbing. Um, my last conversation, I think with Rich, was that the G C and the electric are okay with the delay. And the schedule that we tentatively talked about was uh all of the bids and advertisements would go out this Friday. Um, it'd be out for two weeks, I think it's the fourteenth it would be out, and the twenty eighth, and I gotta double check these dates, and Rich is gonna be in touch with you tomorrow about that. Uh, the bids will be out for two weeks and back by Friday, the twenty eighth. The bid opening would be July second, which is the Tuesday before our meeting. That would give uh M R B the time to do their due diligence and look over everything and get them, get us a recommendation, wink wink. And then on our next meeting on the ninth, we would be set to approve that and move forward on that. We can't do any, much of any work, because you can't do a lot of the um foundation work without knowing where the ducks are going to be and so on and so forth. So everything in a sense is on hold until we get that, except for one thing that I'm gonna um uh mention uh under new business when we review the bids of special inspection. Andy, you wanna add anything?
No, you summarized it well, it started out as an issue of required insurances through a company authorized in New York. There was some resistance by the village's position. Ultimately, we said to M R B, this is a Dasny financed project. We need to run this by Dasny, we don't want any issue on the financing of the project. When that was done, Dasny said, the insurance carriers, we're not even getting to that issue yet, because the contractor itself is not authorized to do business in New York, and doesn't comply with the uh state requirements. So that's what prompted all of this.
Just one question, so if this occurs again on a new project, how will M R B catch it? Cause even if it wasn't a Dasny project, if it was just us doing it, and they weren't licensed to do business in New York, we shouldn't be doing it either. We rely on them to catch it.
We're working through some issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These these contract specifications are put in for a reason, and they need to be adhered to. So we're working through some issues.
They're both being. Yeah. So um down in new business, when we hit the uh special inspection, structural testing services for the Highway Garage, that's um special things that the G C requires as they're doing various parts of of their work. Um, because of the fact uh that we're um that the project has exceeded the one point one in terms of what our, we expect the budget to be. These are uh services that we will be doing ourselves, so the contract will be between us uh and them um. And that requires board motion, so I'm gonna ask uh us um to accept that bid tonight, and I will also, when we get down to that point, uh be looking for a motion to rebid the HVAC and the plumbing contracts within the Highway Garage. Any questions on that in terms of the Highway Garage?
So where does that put us uh as far as timeframe, how far behind the eight ball?
Uh, probably about a month and a half delay, in all honesty.
So where's that get us for the uh, are you gonna be in there by?
No.
Fall or winter or?
The the G C had it had it outlined, the tentative schedule he put together, Neil. When did that end, was that like late October or November?
Initially, right, was?
The the building should be up, but you know, I don't anticipate full use of it till probably spring next year.
And that also includes the fact that we're, we are taking on some some of our own work to do in there. So unfortunately, I think this is gonna make us miss the winter season in there.
Sorry, Lord, Neil.
No.
I know.
Alright, so moving on to the sewer project, um we are, and Andy, you're gonna have to remind me. Is the work plan, have the work plan has been approved?
Right, but the.
And the speedy, we 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 had conversations with D E C about modifying the Speedies permits. Um, we threw an idea to them, or a couple options, and they liked it, so I don't remember if that officially was the Speedies permit was officially.
Right, in in sum and substance, the the work plan, what needs to be done to make sure that we comply with the department's requirements on the John Street super on-site impact of the sewer project, the work plan was put together by Sterling Environmental Engineering. Uh, that work plan was reviewed and ultimately approved, but as part of the approval, D E C's Division of Water did what's called a Speedies equivalency determination and required a fair amount of water storage testing, um lab results before the water can be discharged. That would have resulted in more delay in the project, because of holding times uh at the lab. So we went back to the department and said, there's some alternate concepts on how to handle water, and ultimately, uh, the department agreed with that. We're still waiting for a formal written uh Speedies determination on that, but conceptually, that's been approved by the department.
Yep.
It cuts down on the holding time significantly on the water, and we're able to discharge it directly, I think right to the river, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
That's, that was their preferred method to do it.
And so.
Running it through a chain of gas.
In the meantime, the contractor is working through uh cost estimates.
Which has been modified now that we've gotten a secret with Speedies.
That's where we are.
Uh, um, it, they have finished most of what they can do in this phase, I think they finished all of the work along the Greenway, and the last I I I heard on Friday was that they were doing their sort of finishing touches to get things back the way they're supposed to be.
No, that's not the case.
What's that?
Yeah, it's.
It's not the case.
They're, well, they're they're in the process of doing it, it's not done yet, it's not done, yes, yes.
I'm glad it's on my notes.
I wanted to, I was dreaming up, she was like, I want to have at least me and anybody else on the board that's been involved in Greenway.
Inspect it to make sure.
Sign off.
I agree.
Inversing like and saying, yeah, this is subpar, this is too, yeah, if you wanna join me, we'll take a walk.
Yep.
Remind me to send an email uh to M R B and include you guys in on it, so that we can get that uh on the radar.
Cause I had a phone conversation with someone yesterday calling me regarding the Greenway and asking me, that was my question, when they're gonna put it back together? Or how close are they being done on it, and when will we put it back together the way it was?
And I've been just saying, it'll be closed at the, it'll be closed at most to the end of summer, just to give extra with all the issues, but it'd be nice to have it open, but also travel, easy to travel.
Alright, got it. Um, so they've done uh the the actual digging work along there. I think sometime late next week or early, the following week, there is a little bit of uh work around Fourth and Fifth Streets, some sort of uh repair work that's gonna be commencing, I just got the email on that today, they're gonna get on. What's that?
That's aligning, they're gonna be doing.
On Fourth and Fifth Street and?
Uh, Church Street, Fourth and Willow, over there, that could avoid us.
It's the line that goes down where the oil company used to be?
Isn't that the line where they sculpted and there's a big hole and then someone put a piece of plywood over?
Yeah, so, and they're gonna be getting uh notes out to, or letters out to residents who are in the area to say, heads up, this is coming, so they know.
Are they, are they gonna be putting back together Center Street at the end, down by the, by uh Fifth Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, at this point, in terms of this phase, we're gonna be simply waiting for the work plan to be done, and they can do all the the last part of this work, which is in the John Street area. Um, I forget the roads that are down there that.
Water, Superior.
Superior, Water, Lyman, John, that's that's the last bit. Uh, that's phase one, phase two will be the pump station and um I forget what the other, hooking the pump station and getting every, sort of everything all all working together. One thing I forgot to mention is they did finish the line along the railroad track from the River Road Pump Station heading north to um Mechanic and River Road, um and that actually ended up working out well, and we didn't have to get various easements like we were uh thinking we would have to, so that that portion is done. Uh, that's it with sewer project, any more questions on that? Oh, one thing, um, when um Dave Lucas um retired a couple weeks back, um, they had been looking for someone to handle the construction uh observation for all, for all the projects. Um, Rich had been coming out, once or twice a week to sort of look on, look and keep an eye on things as best he could. Um, I did get to meet that individual who they're gonna be hiring uh on Friday, Friday meeting. Uh, so he's gonna be involved, um, he had a nice resume of, you know, doing a whole bunch of different types of projects and observing, so he's coming out of Vermont, and he'll be uh starting fairly soon, as far as I know, so, did wanna give that update to you as well. Uh, alright, Woods Book uh buyout program, I don't have a lot to update, I'm gonna be reaching out to um some more owners, but things are continuing to progress. I don't think there's anything else I can say at this point. No?
No, well, caught on a bunch of the properties, we've now had the title work completed. They have proposed contracts uh to deliver to property owners, and once we have the executed contracts, it's simply a matter of, you know, clearing certain things in the title and closing, so. For a number of properties, we're in the home stretch.
Yeah, which is, which is really exciting. Um, I had the first uh SIPWIG meeting, Community Participation Working Group meeting over at Huesick Falls Central School, this is the community meeting that D E C um has put together to sort of function as a way for the community to be um involved and uh taught and get uh opportunities to have things explained in terms of all of the remediation, alternate water, everything that's going on. Um, we talked a lot about sort of meeting structure and, you know, talking about bylaws, but we also brainstormed what are our our most important priorities uh moving forward. Uh, these are public meeting, um, I'm uh part of of the group, and um uh town supervisor is, although I think, uh, I don't know, Mark, Mark, can you town supervise for a minute?
Yep.
Are you gonna be coming to meetings, or will Eric be coming to meetings?
No, he just called in, I'll.
Okay, yeah, so we're, so we're both there, um, I know Emily uh was there, Lorraine was there. Um, a bunch of different residents, um, and we're gonna have a presentation from D E C um about a lot of things coming, so the next SIPWIG meeting is on June twenty sixth at six o'clock, that's a Wednesday. Uh, and that will be at the honorary, and D E C will be there, so that's, I would expect a massive information uh update on all of the things that are going on. And a good opportunity uh for questions, not just from us in the group, but for anybody who wants to come.
Public meeting, right?
Yes, it's, these are all public meetings, and one of the things we talked about is putting together a website, so as things come out, it's all on the website, and all this information is out there. So I just wanna pass that on.
Do you know that's by Gloria, right?
Um, nope, I did not.
Oh, you do.
Ah, that's great news. Shoot, alright.
I'm not going by Gloria, I can't.
Um, get on my calendar now. Okay. Um, Andy, can you give us a brief update on the assessor administrative duties?
Uh, briefly, the the board will recall that um the village is no longer a separate assessing unit, the village had been the last within this county status as a separate assessing unit. That was brought in line with the balance of the county. As a result of that, the the town assessor takes on additional duties to cover uh taxing issues, assessment issues for properties located, yes, in the village, but in the town. Um, in front of you tonight, our consideration is a proposed resolution to address some of the those additional duties that the town assessor takes on, given that the village has ceased being a separate assessing unit. And to consider an inter-municipal agreement on how that would work, so that's where we are.
So the re- the resolution tonight will, and that's the third thing in the new business. Um, will basically form uh formalize us going into this, and we'll work on the contract with the the town.
Right, the way it's set up is just to identify periods of time when the town assessor would be working on village assessment and village tax matters.
Yes.
Just formalize that, how that would work, and there is a compensation component. And they put together uh a proposed inter-municipal agreement with the mayor, with Denise. Uh, have you review that, and then once you sign off on it, terms and conditions, propose it to the town.
Yep. Alright, thank you, yeah.
Since village taxpayers pay town taxes, is that really necessary to compensate, is we're already paying?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Uh, that that is an issue for your consideration, I mean, it it does become a town assessor duty, there are certain things that uh the village assessor did.
I'm not saying that the town assessor shouldn't be compensated for the extra duties, but.
What's the salary amount?
I think the the, in terms of the village portion?
Yeah.
I think it was proposed somewhere around five thousand for the year, and that's based off of a certain amount of hours a week. Yeah.
So it's a, it's no, it's nominal, really, but still, to Kevin's point, yeah, we pay town tax to.
At at that, that's right.
Yeah.
That's why this is not, this is something, if you wanna consider this, that would be done through an inter-municipal agreement, not through any kind of standard municipal individual municipal budgeting, this would be a separate agreement between village and town.
And in terms of budgeting, we had uh, when the budget was completed, I think we had a larger amount in budget for um the assessor role before we uh, before it was abolished, so we have the funds already in the budget for it.
And so how would that be dispersed, though, it would be based on submitting time sheets, or is it would be?
It'd be spelled out, that's how these.
Okay.
Work, it would be spelled out on how many hours, how that is proved, what documentation you want, what periodic payments are made, is it done annually, semi-annually? So all of that is is subject to your review.
And and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, won't the roles have to be updated again in several, a few years, where I think they have to be.
Yeah, reassessed, you need to, now that they've done it, they need to do it regularly, so we don't get so far out of whack.
No, no, I don't mean that, no, no, I just mean that they have to be uh monitored still by the assessor, correct? I mean, even the village role is gonna have to be looked at.
There won't be a village role anymore.
There's no longer a separate village role.
Right.
Right.
There is the town role, that will have both the the set value for village and town.
Well, it's partially because the county's changing.
This was really the urging of both the state and the county to do this, and to eliminate the issue of having the same property have different assess values for town and village purposes.
Yep. Alright, and my final update um is actually gonna come from our uh attorney David Engel in regards to negotiations with Saint Cobain and Honeywell International.
You'll stand up. We have, we have been in continuing discussions with uh Saint Cobain and Honeywell uh to the end of seeking to get, you know, simply put, more money out of the companies and try to resolve some issues that have not been resolved to date, and uh it appears that we will have another interim agreement with the companies, I anticipate it will all be reduced to paper probably by the end of this week. And then there will be some kind of notice to that effect, and a special meeting will, if possible, depending on the timing of this, be held probably next week, so we can have it wrapped up before the end of the month. Uh, I can't go into too many details, except to say that uh it will largely cover, I think virtually all of the costs we have had to date. Uh, it will also cover uh some anticipated costs in this calendar year. And uh the parties will agree to hold off on uh any litigation for a specified period, but not too long a period moving forward. And uh, so everyone should wait to see what comes out, but I expect this will all happen uh this week.
Yeah, and as we've done for previous uh intern settlement agreements, we'll have everything online. Uh, and I'll have a, just a simple explanation once we have everything worked out. Alright, thank you.
I can go.
That was the shortest David Engel update ever. Don't punch the beast. It's the food.
Yankees nets tonight.
Dave?
Yes.
Before you leave, um, we're not giving anything up in.
No, I mean, look, we, the only thing you give up is any claim for those things for which they're paying. You know, we 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 can't go back and later on and demand the same money twice.
Right.
So there will be nothing in the way of of a release.
Okay.
Other than, you know, for those costs which they are reimbursing the village for.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you, sir.
Very good.
Thanks, Dave.
Uh, at this point, I wanna open up to the people-to-be-heard section.
You should use this door for someone to ask you another question.
I thought about it, I just thought it would look wrong.
Thanks, Dave.
Bye, Dave.
Just to get an idea of 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 who would like to speak, so I can figure out sort of timing, uh, would anyone like to speak in the people-to-be-heard section? One, two, three. Okay, I'll, let's set a four, a four-minute sort of limited starting point, who would like to go first? Um, as, you wanna go first?
You go.
And as uh, as a reminder, please state your uh name and address for the record, and we, as, like we do with all meetings, everything's recorded, so it's.
My name is Don Smith, I live on River Road. My concern is, we're not getting any police officers patrolling that road, we almost got hit. Pretty, pretty damn close. First, June first, Saturday, this bone was two and fifty, and she didn't even know we're there, we're on the edge of the road. And Prinny saw it, they were supposed to come, and they, he, this is the one, but uh, let me tell you, Richard Prinny and his son saw it, and he, he went and told his father, the Smiths almost got hit. I don't know if any of you guys know about River Road, if you've ever been over there, but a lot of people said they won't walk it, it's very dangerous. And we never see police over there, there's no sidewalk, but still enough, they're going way too fast. You got a daycare center.
Yeah.
You know, and it's tractor-trailers are hitting this manhole on River Road and Martin Street, and you can feel the gold shake, and it's gonna you can feel it in the house, because tractor-trailers are going too fast.
They're not supposed to be on there anyway, I didn't.
Huh? No. But are you guys familiar with River Road?
I I I travel it all the time, and be honest with you, I see the police parked over in.
When? Now, I live there.
Well.
And I have, I have sometimes, I don't see a police officer even with a shoe in a week.
No, they park, they park it at Head Start a lot, they park in the, in the pull-off across from Head Start. I mean, I I travel that road a lot.
I can tell by tire tracks, it'd be all the, there's nothing, nobody parks in there.
One time of day, cause I I know it could not, if the officer on is sitting, there might be at times when the traffic's not going through, but to, well, just to see if we can make sure we have an officer there for better times.
Greenwich, you don't dare go any faster than thirty miles an hour, they're there all the time parked. You can't drive through River Road, you gotta park, and you gotta do it every day to letting people know that you're watching the road, I mean, somebody's gonna get hurt. Definitely, I mean, we saw little kids and all that walking.
Chief, what do you, can you add to, kind of address?
I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm gonna tell you that your cars are over there, cause I I've sat at.
Well, I'm.
Hang on, hang on.
I've sat over at C E.
Five minutes?
I'm not, no, it's not five minutes, it's more than five minutes. I know my cars are over there doing it, because they're issuing tickets on River Road. Um, there's complaints that over on River Road that we handle on a daily basis over there. Um, as you're walking, I understand that, I can't control the sidewalks, sir, okay, and I can't control where you have to walk. I understand that it's a dangerous situation, and and I and I can understand your concerns there. But as to control being there, we're there, and we're we're issuing tickets. But I am not gonna say we're there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, but I can guarantee you that they're there.
The only police officer I see is Ash.
Ryan.
That's the only time, Sunday and Monday. It's dead. Tommy Bass used to be a part time, and he even said it's a very dangerous road.
It's a dangerous road, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with you on that, I guess my only. I, as as to the issues about sidewalks and stuff, they have to address that here, as to the issue of the patrols being over there. That's my responsibility, and I know that they're there. And I will, I will step it up even more.
I wish it would, I mean.
And you and I talked before, and you've had some some complaints that I've gone over your house and and have handled.
I wish it would, every day, really to let people know.
If I'm not mistaken, I think it was last year, so I think I even gave you my my cell phone number, I'll be more than happy to give it to you again, in case something pops up that you can call me directly.
We.
Actually, can I, can I interject, just a, and and Andy, this is a question for you, and um. Perhaps, is this something we look at because there are no sidewalks on that, it's a village street for most of it.
See, a lot of people think it's a highway, really.
Trying to give a solution, um it is that maybe can we lower the speed limit to twenty there, to really make it a statement of slow the hell down? Especially because there are no sidewalks and it is a village street, but it, but it it gives him a.
School.
They do.
You got a big.
Alright, so um.
And that don't do any good, we saw a motorcycle go past three cars right in front of my house, flying.
We have, there's no question, we have a challenge, uh because the the amount of police officers we have at a given time and the fact that we have. Twenty-two going through it, we have speeding locations up here, we have hills all over the place, and we have, of course, River Road, which is notorious for needing attention. Um but your 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 point is well made, uh we understand, and we'll, you know, circle back and see, to make sure we get. What time of the day do you typically see it the most, speeding the most?
Six thirty on, yes.
Six thirty AM?
Six thirty in the morning?
School, one school, and then it's from two o'clock until three thirty. And then evenings, it's it's bad, it's bad.
Okay.
That's when they're going, yeah, right.
Okay.
There's this one red car every morning, about that time between six and six thirty, that fly through.
It's not mine, I have a red car, but it's not mine, I don't drive that, not mine.
I don't know the plate number.
I was gonna ask you, can you, I mean, if it, can you get the plate number?
That's hard, but you know, it's so hard, I mean.
Oh, I don't disagree, I'm just saying that that would be helpful.
So fast that.
If if you're out and you see it, jot down make and time, and if you get that information to us, that's an easy thing, we'll just, we'll get some people over there at those times.
I know, it's hard if you don't know the plate number.
It's hard, you know, like, this tractor trailer is teal, and he's going through there about two o'clock, somewhere between two and three. And he, he's moving.
Alright.
Oh my god, it's, you know, it's.
Anything you can do, call the office and say, I just saw this kind of vehicle here at this River Road, we'll 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 take it down. Great. Thank you, thank you, thank you, chief.
I appreciate it.
No, you call me and and I.
Yep. Who wanted to, who wanted to go next, did you want to go next?
My name is Deanna Vanderkar, I have a problem with the assessors, the way they've raised the the taxes this year. Some people got nothing, some people got a hundred dollars, and other people's got over two hundred dollars. How do you regulate that? Because they don't take care of their property, and we do?
The uh, the, there there's no simple answer, no easy answer to this, um I will, I will be flat and honest. My assessment went up like thirty some percent, uh I I I got hit hard, it just, it is what it is.
Uh, just by myself there.
Yep, I understand, and it was an outdoor inspection, um it's based on measurements of house, I don't think it's based on interior, I don't think. There have been ways to um uh contest or bring bring the issue up. Um, a couple of those have passed by, you can always call the assessor to see what options you have, um I I think I.
Who's the assessor?
Tony Rice.
Tony Rice.
I went to him yesterday, he said he wasn't, so he's done it stuff for the.
What?
That's because there was confusion about what was happening, and that's where we are now, so if you call him back, he will, he will be responsive now.
But there's a grie- where there's, there's a grievance day, and that's the only time you can grieve your assessment.
I don't think anybody realized that the taxes were gonna go so high.
And especially when you're, I'm the same.
I mean, if they'd have realized it, there'd probably been some grievance.
We got a raise in January, and it's been two or three years, well, I got three dollars and the rest went on Medicare, that's what I got, and that's what I get along.
And this, the the village tax was the, was the last one to be adjusted, the school got it, I think the school tax was adjusted first, then the town. This is the last tax to be adjusted to the new assessment.
So other words, we're gonna have to pay that every year, what we're paying, unless we grieve.
Unless you grieve.
Well, you had an opportunity to grieve, you had it, you had an opportunity prior to implementing this, to question it. And and then, if you did, it was, you you pled your case, and they either left it where it was, or reduced it.
Yeah.
Uh but the way it works out, and and I don't understand quite how this breaks down, but supposedly. The dollar amount is still the same, it's just some peoples went up and some peoples went down, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark?
Total amount.
Total amount of assessment, total set amount of assessment across the village and the town remained the same, it just was dispersed differently.
Yeah, and and and.
Somebody's taxes may have gone down, but yours went up, but our amount coming in is exactly the same.
And what what, yeah. And and what Tony's gonna say is, Tony's gonna say that a third of the properties went up, uh they have to pay more, a third went down. And of course, we're not gonna hear from them. What's that?
Because they were paying.
Because a lot of them had been paying too much, because they were assessed at a much higher value than was actually made sense, because they were older tax rooms.
I mean, you improve your house and your taxes go up, that don't seem fair.
Depends on the type of improvement.
A taxable improvements would be a garage, would be a deck, would be, like, new windows are not going to increase your tax, but. But I would check your, if you have online access, you can look it up online, or Tony should have it, is, for example, I I apparently had a screened porch and a two car garage. I wish I knew where they were, but I, but I had to change it, so I had a shed and a deck, and mine went up, you know, it.
And and I have some questions on the measurements that they have for my house, I'm working with Tony on that, so the answer is, speak with Tony, and he will. Especially now, he will be responsive, and if for some reason that doesn't work out, call the village office.
Who's office?
Village office, call the village office, i- if it does, if if.
Tony doesn't work out.
Some reason Tony is is not responsive, but he'll be responsive, so.
Oh, I like Tony, he's always.
Yep, yep, yep. And my apologies for uh for him not being ready for that, that was something that I was. Do you accept payment in donuts or cookies?
You guys should have carpools, you live next to the radio jumpers.
Uh, who else would like to go next, Marion?
Okay, Crook and Rucker, uh Marion Stevens, Wyler Avenue, all right, first I'll ask the foolish question, uh uh there'll be no change.
There's no change.
Thank you, all right, that one's taken her reverse nine one one.
That's the one.
I sit here, and again, we listen to people talk about be not being notified or not knowing about something, cause maybe everything isn't done.
Well, we wouldn't be able to use reverse nine one one for a situation like that, there's very strict rules on how you can use reverse nine one, but I know you're.
Grievance days or things like that.
Yeah, the, you're gonna.
Or it's in a newspaper as well.
Just to make a clear differentiation between the two, is if you sign up for the New York Alert. You can opt in for alerts like grievance day that you get an email or text on by opting in. But reverse nine one one is something very, a separate entity, that if there's a tornado, a flood, major disaster, where we can force it on anyone that's not. Opted in or not, but we cannot do that unless people have opted in, so when you get the alerts from New York Alert, you've signed up for those.
I just think there needs to be something done in this community about notifications, because I guess electronics is wonderful. I don't, you know, it's like tonight's meeting.
Doesn't reach that.
For our the agenda, or, and then come to find out, we sit here for an hour, because we went into executive session. Here, because of the meeting.
Well, that, I mean, that notice was uh posted here, and it was in the newspapers, right?
Right. And the agenda that says right here, it's indicated June sixth, no change being.
Like, that, we had that out about the five thirty executive session, and that was in the paper, and that was noticed all over the building as well, so. But but I know we can't, not everything gets out.
Not everything gets out.
I do not have computers, so.
I know it, I know it.
It's in the newspaper.
Those people don't have computers.
So that's why, that's why we rely on newspapers.
Eagle, who do an awesome job of helping us out, right?
Marion, did you have anything else?
Uh, yes, we do, alright, we appreciate that this uh streets were swept, but again, you get notification. Um, before we knew it, our street was being swept, and of of course, the announcement that the sweeping on the streets was. I think at your meeting that um.
Last month.
Prior Tuesday, um but the sweeping started early, our, we appreciate the sweeping being done, but the problem is, again, we have to have cars removed. Because you wouldn't even know that we were swept, because some cars don't get moved, and then these wonderful rains we've had, we've got the dirt still down there again. Um, because, um, so that has gotta be enforced. Because it goes around the cars, and then you get a good rain, and we just end up with a mess again, down our sidewalks, everything. And we've had some good rains this year.
Yeah, if you could notify the people so they can have their cars out of there.
We we do. But you can't, you can't make people move their cars.
Do they pay attention?
Right, you can't make people move their car, you know, I mean, we're not gonna issue tickets to clean the streets, and you know, we we have notified.
Go in other places.
Yeah.
Um, again, I would also, um, third thing is, uh, we're now on the fourth year that I again attend here. I've got a uh field at my next door house, a zombie house again, um. It needs to be, hey, I could probably get bales right now.
This is uh, this is the season that's approaching, I'm sure Mark will talk about it every time, we have to wait for it to get to a certain height, and then we can cite it, and then we can.
Can I just say, uh, Mark has thirty, I jumped to Mark's word, thirty hundred grass complaints.
But you also have to make someone work, Mark isn't driving.
Call the bank on it.
No, I I, no, let me finish, you can't expect Mark to drive around the village, who the fuck is saying, oh, that guy's not mowing his lawn.
Mark goes through their house every day.
I I understand that, but still, Mark, it lea- it has to be legally done and notified. There's, there, if you come in here, and there's forms in the village office that people can fill out. And so Mark has a registered complaint, and then he can act on it and contact the bank.
Well, Bobby, I have a note just that I wanted to bring up on that, not that, you, you know, we do have Google, um, for for internet and some of our docs. That we can have a Google form, again, if someone has access to report it, where Mark can see, and then uh get an email about it, which might help with notification.
Right, but I'm talking to these guys because they don't have a computer, they're saying, so they have to come to here and, right.
Or on your phone, if you've got a smartphone, you could do it there.
Mark, did you figure out whether you had to open a new uh report for every year, or is that just continuation from last year?
I open a new one, in most cases, I open a new one each year. Um, and that is one I opened one on, uh, I I actually uh gave that out to Jerry last week. And I told him today, I'm gonna yield that.
But you know, Mark, I will say, we saw somebody come up at one point, um on it, and we thought that the bank had taken over on it. And on doing it, so that's why we hadn't notified you earlier, but like I said, with all this rain, we've really done it up there. And you've gotta know, because you were over there a couple days ago, wasn't you walking behind in the back and stuff like that?
I'm being watched.
I I gotta be honest, Mark, yes, we do watch the house, because I, you've got open sheds back there, and I don't want somebody getting out in that backyard.
It's a sad, it's a sad state, because when I started four years ago, the house was empty, but it wasn't in the shape that it's in.
That's right.
You know, right now, it would be better if we tore down. It's it's, I mean, to watch it deteriorate the way it's deteriorating is.
But again, there's there's rules, we can only.
Right, there's a lot of those.
Work on certain things at certain points.
We had, so we went and called, and I wanna say, we did call the bank people, and they said, oh, we're not, no longer dealing with that anymore. We, that was taken off our.
But the bank's not the enforcer, so you're wasting your time talking with the bank.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't enforce for the village.
Sometimes it helps, but that one truly is a zombie property, you know, and I'm not even sure, I've gotten the same response, I don't even know who's in charge of it.
Well, chief, cover yours a second, not that I'm condoning trespassing, but I did notice there's one near me, then one of the neighbors went out and weed whacked it. So, chief, you can uncover yours, but hey, if it, you know, I I don't blame them.
Bobby, how many years did you mow the one I just went into?
I've been mowing the house next door to me, and Vanessa moved into, for, for, it's been empty for five years, and I mowed it.
And there was, we have even done shoveling and stuff and everything, but right now, Harold's house cannot, no longer do that.
No, I understand that.
And I don't think it should, he should be expected to have to do that.
Nope, it's it's an, it's an impossible situation created by someone else screwing up and not handling what they're going to, and we are limited by what we can and can't do, and when we can and can't do it, so. We hear you, we got it, thank you, um, did you wanna say anything? Alright, Emily.
It's all for Mark, Mark, do I need a permit to put in two panels for fence?
How high?
Six by six.
That's planning board, right?
I gotta have permit?
Planning board, I said.
Two pieces of fence?
Planning board.
Anything over six, anything over four feet, you have to have approval from the zoning board.
Oh, zoning, not playing?
Darn it.
I don't know.
How close is it to your property line?
I want it like, I don't, I'm just taking a look into the deer head on my neighbor's shed. No, the dead deer head just laying on the top of the shed.
The village is more.
It's four feet.
We have it.
Or you could do what my neighbor just did, and put in a row of barber fighting.
Four feet isn't gonna solve the problem, I want six feet, can I have?
So, yeah, that's.
So there's, that's the process.
That's zoning board.
Four feet.
Talk to Marie about zoning board, right?
We have a zoning board meeting on Tuesday night, the eighteenth.
Or you do four foot.
So, reach out, reach out to Marie tomorrow or the next day to find out about what you have to do timely to get on.
Okay, second thing, does my mom need a permit to put in a ten by twelve she shed?
Yes.
Yep, it's got a she shed?
No, she shed.
But if it burns down, that's not on us.
So she doesn't need a permit from you?
How much, what is the mark?
Less than a hundred square feet.
What's ten by twelve?
That's a hundred and twenty, so that would be more.
So it's more, so if it goes smaller, she won't?
Correct.
And that'll be on the tax.
Has to be less than ten by, less than a hundred.
Hundred and forty-four.
Oh, a hundred and forty-four? Oh, then you're okay, ten, ten by twelve is fine, that's a hundred and twenty.
And no permit, she's good to go.
I just went over this with you, I should remember this stuff, jeez.
Drainage on my street.
It's draining good?
It sure is.
Right out into the street.
Nice little river.
That's not a code issue.
Which street is this? Which street?
He's the one who gave it all the reins, it's mother nature.
Emily, is that Abbott Street Extension?
Yeah, there's somebody purposely putting their gutters, like gutters, to drain their sump pump into the road, that's a problem.
That, they're not supposed to have sump pumps in the village.
Well, it's, no, you can't, if it's not gonna be sewer.
What's the pump you can't have?
You can pump it outside the house.
Okay, you pump it outside.
It's an issue, because they did the roadwork up there, and they tore up that foot section.
I'm not saying it's not an issue, I'm saying it's not a code issue.
So who takes care of that?
God.
Who does something?
Do we have any comment, Neil?
I mean, that's going in front of properties. Not until ice.
Yeah.
Winter time is my only concern, then she's gotta find someplace else to pump it.
It's going right in front of other people's houses.
But it's in the street, right?
And it's in the street, and it's, I mean, it's gonna.
That's where water usually runs.
Is there a strong drain up that tree?
No, it, what it does is it runs right down, right, like, takes up half of Abbott Street Extension, is soaking wet from where their gutter comes out. And then it doesn't drain until it hits the corner of Wilder and Abbott.
We have one that runs here when it rains, it comes down from here, down the road, and into the, into the um, the the storm drain. Just, it just does that.
Well, they're purposely draining it into the road.
Uh, I guess I'll follow up with Mark to see if that's a code thing, or if there's anything that we can do about it.
So, nothing gets done until winter, and my kid slips on the ice and breaks her ankle, that's really nice.
By winter time?
No, they they had it out there, they constantly. No, they they had it out there, they constantly have it out there.
I know, during the summertime.
My car constantly slips on it in the winter.
During the winter time, she's been pumping it back on her lawn and I don't have any control for that.
Talk to the neighbor about it.
I don't know them, like.
Talk to the neighbor.
You will if you knock on their door.
Get the deer head off of, off of, off the porch and the whale, and knock on the door.
Alright, alright, reports. Uh, we have the report packet here, um, Ben, anything you wanna highlight in treasure report? We just um, put some quick highlights, it's been a very busy month.
Yeah, very busy. Bill review, quick books updated, working on the reliving spreadsheets, busy, busy, busy. And no treasure report, no physical.
Yes, um, looking for motion to approve unless any other questions?
Motion.
Thank you, Vanessa. Second, Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, um. Chief, you wanna uh, go for the police report?
Emily, he's gonna check our local laws to see if there's something that addresses that.
Well, if I get an accident or my daughter gets hurt.
Not to reopen it, but just, I asked.
I have no problem going after who I have to.
I think I tried talking to the neighbor, at least knock on the door.
But if we do have to, we can enforce, it's best to know, you know what I mean?
Is there like a culvert nearby that they could go into?
No, nobody reopened, I just said I asked Andy to look in the law, sorry.
No grate in the ground until you get to this corner of Wilder and Abbott.
You can see it on Google Street here where it's coming from her house.
House for sale right there, people are coming to look at it and it's got a river going in front of it.
Yeah.
Is it in the road?
Absolutely, it's got, it's got, it has a great extension. I've been tempted to run it over, to be honest.
You can see it in Google Earth, from space.
No, it's in the road, it's in the road.
Chief, take it away on your report, please.
Okay, um, this is the report from May of two thousand nineteen, there's some corrections on your reports that you have there, so please follow. Total calls from May were a hundred and forty-one, total calls for April were a hundred and sixteen, total calls for the year is six hundred and twenty-four. Last year, at this time, there was five hundred and seventeen, so you can notice that there's been an increase in call on you. Total arrests for May were twenty-one, total arrests for April were twelve. Um, total arrests so far this year are seventy-seven, compares to last year at this time was thirty-six. I highlight them because there is an increase in numbers, there's an increase in uh, in arrests and stuff. Um, and I do understand the concerns of the people when it comes to the, the controlling of it. I know our numbers, uh, and traffic tickets have increased, um, we keep in contact with the board. So those, most of those have increased, I'll try to get a break next because we being aware of the traffic tickets are being dispersed. Um, the highlights of them are domestic calls, um, are increasing, we're up to twenty-one. And if you just run down real quick, you'll see that the traffic, um, calls that we've had are fourteen. Now, those traffic calls consist of of um, complaints as well as um. The number of arrests, and I say arrests, misdemeanors or more that have been made for violations. And the arrests for the months were for burglary.
Thank you.
Um, there was warrant arrests, there was traffic violations, there was harassment, criminal possession of controlled substance, criminal mischief, criminal possession of marijuana. Dangerous welfare of a child, there was a burglary arrest and there was criminal possession of stolen property arrest along with assault. Um, the police, we partici- were participant in police memorial or in the Memorial Day parade. I wasn't here, um, I was on vacation and the officers advised that it went well with great attendance. We also had the first run of the season, I wanna thank Neil and his crew, they they really helped out, no problems with the run. We also had the little week parade. Um, the AED bat, uh, pads, this is with its fibulators, um, they've all been updated. Um, we do it on a yearly basis and we update our fibulators and pants, the other ones expire, so we have to put the noise in. We also have scheduled firearm training this upcoming month, there's two dates here, so we're hoping to have all officers. Um, covered for firearms training by the end of the month, this is done twice a year, this is be the first part of the first year of the firearms training.
I have another question, the criminal possession of marijuana, now, and that, those aren't just appearance tickets, right, those are actually, is that?
All depends.
I was gonna, uh, no, it's over an amount, certain amount?
Over a certain amount and if it's tied into another violation, there will be arraignment on it. Um, if it's just a small possession of it, uh, the officers might come across it in a traffic stop. Um, it's a separate arrest other than the traffic ticket. If the officers are, uh, are dealing with someone in the street. Um, or in the process of making an arrest, like on this burglary, there was an arrest made, which the individual one of it, one arrested. Had some marijuana on him, so that there was a charge, a separate charge. We have to monitor this very closely because it's not a fault of the courts or anything, but the age, raise the age limits that are coming into effect. And now the, the, the state is starting to change these possession laws.
Right, and I was just curious, because of Vermont being legal and Massachusetts being illegal, if it, you've seen an uptick is why, that's why I was going with it.
Yes and no, I mean, it's, their attitude across, not, not knocking them or anything, but people from across this. This state lines are coming over here and they think that, well, why are you doing it over here when we can do it over there? It's, it's, uh, I'm not saying that it's, it's not becoming a big problem.
No, and I just didn't know if it was a volume, like if you saw, caught something, I didn't know if it was like somebody you can catch with large, you know, like over a, what is it, like twenty-three grams or something? Right?
I don't think you can buy that much dispenser, though, I think it's smaller, yeah.
Well, and I sent the, Mark, you got that, there was a.
Little pineapple express.
That hemp, hemp, um, they're starting up here in town, it's legal. And they come in, they advise us, I forward it over to, to Mark for town, just to be aware, did they need a permit for that? It's just a business, New York State legalized it. Right, but I'm, you just can't create it in your field without.
No, as far as I know, it's agricultural crop.
So we're gonna start seeing these probably pop up a little bit more.
There's gonna be a lot of, there's a lot of farmers in the area right now planting the, the hemp, it's not the kind of smoke it's for.
CBD, right.
Unfortunately, the young kids don't understand that.
Right.
You know, we've had issues with, you know, over in Vermont pulling it up and then coming across the state line with it. And then Vermont's calling us because it's.
Right, cuz they think they're stealing pot with THC instead of.
And what they're hit is nothing, but, and the only other issue that, and we've talked about and Mayor and Kevin, I kept you aggressive. A lot of the, the issues with you, uh, it's gonna be tough, we're gonna have a tough year, I mean. The mayor had a call, it was a Saturday night, eleven thirty at night, we were dealing with, with these kids that are on bikes out in the middle of the street and, um.
I know one of them.
One of the individuals crossed the path of somebody that was driving a car. And whatever he did, that guy came after him. We don't know who the guy was, the kid couldn't tell us, but the guy was pretty angry, that was like eleven thirty at night.
Yeah.
Well, and it, just to go say, it's, it's about the same seven or eight that are generally the issue anyhow.
Yes.
So, just as, it's not like, most of our kids are pretty good, but there's a handful that are.
Well, I know one that took down a tractor trailer.
Well, there's one that you're over, very familiar with him and mom that I know does that a lot, so.
And, and, and now because these laws are changing, we just made an arrest on a, on an assault, um, and I know the mayor is aware of this. It, and probation got involved in it today, with me in conversation, they were glad that we sent it down to him. Um, it was a felony, this kid literally took someone's arm and put it over his shoulder. And so, um, that's kind of like an isolated situation, but the, and these are younger kids. Um, we're having problems at the parks and we're, we're trying to stay on it as much as we can. Um, so, we're gonna have to step things up a little bit more aggressively with, with, with the kids.
And I thought, and a lot, based on that, by, based on the conversation we've had and, and. Are, are, we definitely need to move forward to trying to get it, have that meeting that we're gonna have with the school, the DA's office and. Remember, we, we canceled it one time, we have to cancel it.
And then, and I always say.
School closing, it'd be a good time to have it.
There's certain issues that they can get involved with, with us and certain issues that can't. So one of the issues we may wanna do is just to have a meeting amongst ourselves, um, and then a separate meeting with the school officials and guards. Um, you know, the last issue that they had over there with, with these kids on the video, um, as I spoke to the school and I spoke to the deputy over there. They handled it that day, we're gonna get it the rest of the time, it's, it's, and it, it happened the final day, I, some of those kids were just, they came right at us.
Well, I, I would also like to recommend at least, we're at the addition, I think, to speak as the, you know, as an employee of the school that. The addition of the resource officer, officer this year has actually been fantastic, uh, very positive with the kids and, and when you see the video, he's not arresting, he's there as a resource. But is there something we can do to work with the county, cuz he is actually a sheriff's deputy, not school employee? To maybe utilize him during the offseason too, or somebody like him? So that way, kids do still have a resource officer that's on our police force, or at least works with our police force in the offseason. I don't know if we can budget for that, but.
With, with the school on issues that don't even involve the school, that may involve an issue, an incident that occurred here with a family. And I'll call Patton morning.
No, I know, you're great with that, I just mean somebody that the kids know, that the, that the youth can relate to directly, and I mean, you're, you're great with them, but. Somebody that's maybe here, that, that, that's their function for their job, cuz you have a lot of things under play.
And, and I, and I agree with you on that, my problem is, is right now, and we're addressing it tonight with another hiring, I'm short people. Um, and, uh, that's not the answer to all the problems, I understand that, we have to do some of the things that you, that you're pointing out there.
When the enforcement, it comes down to enforcement, I mean, it's, you know, like, we ran into the problem that we talked about, or when we prompted us to try to have that meeting was. With the county and the DA's office and everybody, getting everybody involved, it makes we're all on the same page.
It, right, I think that that's a big plus, and I think Andy from the school, he keeps in touch with us. Um, and we talk on a, on a daily basis and Cory, who's been working days, um, is always in contact with Andy too. Um, so, yes, I, I, if we can, if I can try to figure out, assign someone directly to it. Um, I know we're gonna be coming into, not that negotiations make an issue on that, but it's something that. You know, seniority prevails, you guys deal with it in the school, oh, I'm, I'm a senior person that doesn't, we gotta get beyond that. Put the right person in on that, uh, in that.
Just something we should consider, at least somebody that's a youth oriented officer that works specifically or specializes there.
Yep.
Um, on the resume we have, can we hire this person?
Yes, he, he's worked here before.
Okay, I guess I'm not, okay.
Do you wanna address that now?
Yeah, um.
Can we do that while?
Yeah, um, we have a, we have a resume from an officer who did work here in the past, uh, he is, is he full time at Hudson Falls right now?
Yeah, what happened was Ryan's was part-time in Greenwood and he was part-time, he came without his part-time. The opportunity was for him to go back to Greenwood on a full-time basis and he did. And they've got a policy that he had to work pro- a probationary period to get beyond before he's able to go to a part-time, now he's able to come back to part-time with us.
Great.
Um, and, and he was one of the officers that I did look at at one time, he's good with the kids, he's a young guy and everything, he's. I think he'd be a great addition to us and at this point, I'm hoping we can bring him on part-time, um, and start filling in some of the. The loopholes that we've got.
Yep.
It's getting to the point where, uh, uh, it's getting, it's a bad, it's starting to become a bad situation. You can see what's going on in the city of Troy and right now, we're getting people, I was down at Rockin' on the River down there last Wednesday. And there was individuals from our village that are, that were down there. That I know they were down there not just to watch Skeeter Creek or whatever the name was, um, and, cuz I watched what was going on. Um, and then they were coming back up here, so I mean, we're having a flow, I've got an issue going on right now with a, with a particular person that's. Um, living in the village, um, he's brought his thoughts of Troy up this way. And, you know, I've had a, a brief conversation with him, we're having another conversation with him. So we try to monitor the situation as close as we can, I can't stop that from happening, but, um, we, we really have to step down.
Yep.
Step up, especially with the youth right now.
Um, we have the resume for Ryan, uh, in front of us, uh, if, uh, that's alright with you guys, I would entertain a motion to. Hire Ryan as a full, as a part-time police officer.
Motion.
Brian?
Second.
Second, Bobby, we've, we've had him before, the background check was performed, we have the resume, everything checks out, so I'm good with this, any other comments?
Effective Bob, when?
Tonight would be good.
And Bob, just as a weird request for future resumes, cuz sometimes we don't necessarily know who they are, if we could. I hate to say attach a picture, but just so at least we have a visual of, cuz every now and then there's something like, yeah.
And someone in the crowd.
If we could just add that in there, what? For us, not you.
No, there's legal.
Oh, that's true, or at least after, okay, wait, yeah, right, stop, after we've approved the hire. To, I will stand corrected, after we've approved the hire, at least send a picture to the board so we know who the new employee is, not during, not before, thank you, Craig, good call. Yeah, just after we hire them.
Yeah, cuz in the, in the process, I run criminal histories for employment and.
Okay.
And.
Alright, so we have the motion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
Thank you.
Alright, motion carries.
Do you want a motion to prove the police report?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Second, Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you, chief.
Thanks, Bobby.
Uh, Mark, code enforcement report, please.
Hi, Mark. What time you see?
Nothing's going on in code.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mark, would you be interested in sort of online reporting forum, would that help you as a citizen?
Mark, if you give me copies, I'll, I'll keep it from year to year and we'll get them for men.
Online?
What's that?
We have an online forum? You can email us for online.
Uh, every once in a while, I get one that comes off from the website.
Do you bring another one?
Let me check.
I, if there is maybe to prove it, cuz Google Forms, you can select what it is specifically, so you can maybe have a trail.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I'm really running short on things to do, uh, let's regenerate more.
But at least you have an evidence trail, yeah.
There's a lot of things going on, I mean, it's, and, and, and now it's like on Wilder, I wish I had more time to devote. You know, to any particular house, but as you can see from the report, I mean, we have forty or fifty empty houses. You know, Kevin asked me for a report tonight, uh, the empty houses, some are zombies, some are, um, just abandoned. Uh, and some are actually in foreclosure, so there's, there's different, there's different stages of properties. Some of the foreclosures last six months, some foreclosures last six years, I don't know. Um, and the banks, those are, those are the ones really that are zombies where, you know, the banks are supposed to take care of them. Um, you know, but there's a lot of hoops to jump through, some of the companies are getting better, I am getting more contacts with, uh, property management companies. And I'm able to work, some of them are good, some of them, they sublet, the property management company sublets it out. You know, people come and, and mow a square or take a picture of it.
Yeah.
So, when I, when I catch that, I do try and let the banks know that, you know, your property management people are not doing their job. Seven River Street's a great example, I got a report, they wanted to know if all the code violations were cleared up, you know, the people, they, they had mowed. Supposedly, they had mowed, they had power washed the ramps and the stairs, uh, and fixed the wiring issues. They had done any, they mowed a little square, they had done, they did power wash, as a matter of fact, it was wet that day, I almost slipped and fell on the ramp cuz it was so slippery. I ended up in the house, uh, found an open door, found a couple of open doors. Um, but in the house, somebody, they had sort of rehabbed on the house, none of the wirings are buried, none of the wires are buried in the walls, they're all exposed, new wiring. So, you know, it's just the, the house a mess. You know, so, and all that stuff takes.
Well, like the house next door to me, that, they were sending someone down to mow the lawn from Plattsburgh.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's not, I mean, that's not unusual.
And followed with a zero-turn lawnmower and the, the lawn's the size of this room, you know, it's a postage stamp and they're sending somebody down with zero turn.
Yeah, I wish, you know, I wish that they just, like.
Send them in my yard.
Getting in touch with me and let me, you know, let me know, I can follow up on stuff, make sure it's getting done, but. So there is, I mean, we just have, we have a lot between, you know, that, just with all the empty houses, the apartments, you know, there is, there's quite a bit going on. And I still get pushback on, I had a lady cry today because she has to get her apartments, it's been two years. And she has to get them inspected again, and she's just all over me, and I, I just, I just let her get rant, you know, and, and it's like. You know, this is the way, you're gonna buy properties and who's, who's it follows, I mean, I think the inspections are a good thing. We have a lot of apartments, I'd be in favor of more apartments, if we can get the apartments that we have. In inventory now, under control, so that landlords all get it, they're all working, they're all taking care of their properties. But there's just still a lot of pushback, we're getting, at least so they're, they're safe as far as fire codes and stuff goes, everybody knows, you know. I'm not leaving, you know, uh, until they, until we know all the, the fire. I'm not leaving, you know, uh, until they, until we know all the the fire and, um, carbon dioxide detectors are are working. You know, or at least, you know, but today I left and I did close it out. She knew she had replaced one in a bedroom. But there was one right outside the bedroom. So that, I was okay with that. She knew she had to replace it. She will replace it. She'll, you know, so. But at least we're getting that far. But we're, I'm still seeing fa- houses, apartment houses fall into decay. People, they, you know, some of these owners still do not want to invest the money into these properties that they really need to, um, to maintain.
No, they can see that by your court cases, because you can see the ones that are rental properties that, you know, adjourned or no shows and.
Well, I'm open to any suggestions. I think at some point I'll talk to Andy, you know, on some of these I've actually come to a dead end now. You know, it's like, alright, we brought them to court, they're not responding, they're not coming to court. And so now the inspections aren't getting done, nothing's getting done. And, you know, now if something happens, you know, is it a liability on the, on the village? I don't think so, because I think we've done everything we're supposed to do, but it's still a safety issue. I mean, now they're not getting inspected. And I have no other recourse. You know, this seems like there's gotta be more in the process where we can do.
Andy, did you write the Brunswick's new zombie property law?
I did.
You think it's gonna make a difference to the law that they put in?
Um, well, we'll see. The, uh, that's on their agenda Thursday night to finish out the process. It's designed to first have a vacant building registry. As a way to maintain a, a list of the vacant properties. And also associated property maintenance requirements for lots containing vacant buildings. Uh, there's enforcement mechanisms in it. Um, there are annual registration fees. Which are fairly sizable with the emphasis of getting these back into use. And then there's also the property maintenance requirements and a notice is sent out to the. Property owner of record and if they fail to maintain it. If the town chooses to do so, they can go on and maintain it and charge the cost. And then if that cost is not paid. The law provides for a re-levy on their real property tax. It's an effort to try to get a handle on the vacant properties and. And zombie properties. I will tell you, there is state law regarding, uh, properties that are in foreclosure. Where the lender is is responsible for a vacant property and there you can't have any additional. Registry requirements or property maintenance requirements, cause that's done at the state level. Although as Mark will tell you, it's very frustrating, because a lot of lenders do not comply with that state law. And it's very difficult to get the AG's office involved. Um, that's frustrating when a property is in foreclosure. But if a property is just vacant or it's not being maintained, I will tell you Brunswick first started a. The process with a proposed property maintenance code that would apply to any property, vacant or otherwise.
We have some of that in our laws already.
And there was pushback by, and you can imagine that, by people who simply say, why should I have to keep my lawn at six inches? I like it a little bit higher. I'm out in the country. I've got all these acreage. How's that gonna apply to me? I like having a dense growth in a certain portion of my property. So through that process, it was modified. And now that proposed law is really dealing with vacant properties, uh, and property maintenance on vacant properties. And we'll see how that goes. I do think it will help. I do.
Yes, I read it in the paper. I was curious how.
It's been a process. We started it back in January, I think it was first introduced and it's gone through a few revisions and. Uh, anticipate that it'll be adopted Thursday night, but I do think it will help. It's an effort to try to get a handle on the vacant properties.
Mark, what is the name of the form that we need to fill out about this? So.
On the website, it's just, I think it's just a complaint, some kind of a complaint.
Uh, under whose division then? I'm looking under yours right now and I don't.
Is it nuisance complaint law?
Yes, nuisance complaint.
Might be a nuisance complaint. I don't think it's under the code.
I don't see it.
I know it's a form.
I think they used to have them out there.
So going back to the Wilder Avenue one, you know, I mean, it's a good example. And I was thinking about this today. Is like, um, being able to, okay, we can't get anybody to respond and and taking what we're doing with the lawns. Maybe one step further, where like, uh, the steps out there on this house on Wilder Avenue have deteriorated. To the point where they're not safe at all, you know. So why can't we do, you know, hit that next step?
Regulations.
And and hire like a local contractor, at least then we can, we have some oversight with it, to make sure they're put back to code. And that they're safe, you know, and and charge it against the, the property. You know, chances are the, you know, that that one is either, it's probably gonna end up going for taxes. You know, so the county is, the county does reimburse us, just like we're doing for the lawns, you know, and, uh, some of the other things. And then they're the ones that are made holes through their auction or not.
Right.
I mean, some of those properties go for nothing, but.
Mary, if you go to on the website, uh, the, the links across the, the, near the top, the last one is laws, regulations and codes. If you click that, the second thing listed is the nuisance law and within the nuisance law, it has a download complaint form.
Submit an online form or download a complaint form.
Okay, now we'll print, we'll get, print it out and.
So you can submit it online and I guess that will go directly.
I have always felt, uh, uh, even back to the good days, that, uh, this position is a, is a really a key position in the village. To try and, uh, you know, to to bring up, you know, the standards for our properties.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, and that's really what I've been striving for. Uh, I'm open to any suggestions that that will help us get there. Um, but I can tell you, it's, I stay pretty busy and it is hard sometimes just keeping up. You know, you throw in, cause every time you do one of these complaints, you know, um, you throw in, you know, thirty lawn complaints, you know, and. Um, it does take time, cause I do have to verify.
Yep.
That, you know, there is an issue.
Right, you can't take it for granted based on.
No, I do have to verify.
Uh, just as a possible thing, uh, we should probably consider as a board and is that maybe we should form with a few board members, a committee. To, on ideas to address blight, whether that's changing some of our laws or passing laws or strengthening what you can do. Having some solutions to deal with some of the more blighted properties, so that that improves neighborhoods. I think, I mean, is that something we should maybe? Not now, but consider forming some committee to come up with ideas, so the board can present those.
I was even looking at a Bennington law that they have for, uh, boarded up properties where if for some reason. The building comes in disrepair and they they're ordered to board up the windows, within, we put in a law that they have to board the windows if they're painted. But their law states that it has to be painted when they put it up to a, you know, neutral color and then within thirty days it has to be glass.
You're talking about if it's a broken window to board it and then glass it? Yeah.
Uh, I, I know we had started to talk about this and we were, we looked a little bit at, uh, the Brunswick. Situation, so I think when that's law, I think that's a, that's a great starting point for us.
Well, so, also some other states have done things where we talk about things come off a tax roll, it's demolished, where there's some communities that are now saying, alright, we tore down this house next to you. We're gonna sell you the property for a dollar, but you need to go to the either zoning or planning board and have the parcels merged. That way it's one big improved parcel. They will pay more tax on it, but you're not losing as much money and, but you are losing the blighted helps. So that's a way, people have a bigger yard, better resale value, nicer communities, just as one thing to. Where we're taking a hit on the building not being there, but then we're putting it back in the tax rolls as part of an improved property, not a separate parcel.
In the city of Troy, they, uh, they have control over their tax foreclosures, so what they do is take, uh, proposals from people and how they're gonna fix the house up. And then they sell it at a real low fee, but they have people that have made a plan on how to fix that house up.
Yeah.
On the tax rolls.
But I mean, stuff like all these ideas, I think if we put them all, put them all on the table, then maybe meet with Andy and and Mark at that point to say. How much of this can we adopt, adopt here and how much of this work? And part of that becomes citizens being involved too, whether it's a plan to fix property or a plan. Alright, we get it demolished, can you take ownership of the parcel? You know, kinda, all those things.
That's great.
I, can I say something? I don't want you guys thinking that we're picking on you every year about this. We live in a nice community up there and that's kind of the eyesore of the community. And what was so bad is when my taxes were assessed, they upped my taxes on the street. The houses found me, didn't get their taxes up. And they upped our taxes and then luckily I grieved it and at least got mine to match my neighbors that are two identical houses. But it's an eyesore even on our street, because we feel we keep our properties in good shape on our road.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody blames you.
No.
You know, and this is the first time I've ever heard about a form to be filled, because I would have had that form filled out the first day of spring.
Watch out, forms are common.
Mark, your motion is gonna be melted.
Still respond. I mean, I don't have to, I'm still responding.
Yeah. Anything else for Mark?
Nope.
Looking for motion or?
Motion. Second.
Report. Bobby and Ben, familiar duo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mark. Uh, let's see here, community service, I don't have a report at this time, but I do know that we have some projects, some mowing projects in the gazebo, so. Also more information for that. Um, clerk, deputy clerk report, it's right there. Any questions? Motion to approve for someone?
Second.
Ben and Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. Highway departments. Bobby, do you wanna, uh, mention a couple of things?
Unless Neil wants to.
Neil, you wanna mention a couple of things? They've been busy. As always.
My biggest concern is getting them to, uh, some guys tired tonight.
Oh, do you have?
I do have the resume.
Oh, okay, okay, it's not, okay.
I did not know that you wanted us to hire them tonight, or maybe I didn't, I forgot.
But now we do.
Probably I just forgot. I can, I can go get those. Let me go get copies of those, cause I have to get something else anyway. Um. Anything else you wanna state in your report? We do have, um, um, on the agenda. Uh, the motion to declare a surplus and advertise the sale of the two flatbed pickup, so we have that on the agenda for tonight. Um, and we also have on the agenda, um, the special inspections required for the highway garage and a motion, uh, later to rebid. So that's all coming. Alright, looking for motion to?
Oh, one, one question, Neil, okay. Or is the street cleaning, do we, the street sweeper is gone back or?
Gone.
Okay. Oh, okay.
And, you know, I, I understand where she's going from.
Oh, I do too.
But when we go through and sweep the street and there's cars off it, people turn around and blow the grass back onto the street. What's the sense of moan or sweeping, you know?
I mean.
People just don't care.
Right, the, the, the idea of the sweeper is to get the.
The dirt.
Well, yes, to get the winter sand and whatever dirt off the, the road as much as possible. But yeah, I, I agree with you. It's not the, it's not the, the intent for people to mow their lawn and and blow it out into the street and.
And most of your excess dirt is coming from, uh, that snow street project. You know, things aren't quite sealing up yet, there's very long and stuff. So.
It's quite a lot of dirt coming down. Our sidewalk gets plastered with it.
We should do what Troy does. They have a, a tow truck follow the sweeper and if, uh.
No, we shouldn't do that. No. No.
That's such a bad idea.
Can we, uh?
Yeah, yeah, cause it, cause it, who's gonna collect the money and who's gonna pay, who's gonna pay the fine?
We gotta.
Watch your car, right?
Legally, you can't, you can't do that unless you have it on a law in books. And I don't wanna put the law in the books.
Collect these back, um, because I, I need to make sure that.
Oh, these are the, um.
Yeah, information, uh, for some information doesn't get out.
No, I, I, but I do take it down.
Here are the, uh, the two. Did we approve the, uh, highway report yet?
No, they didn't.
Okay. Any more questions for Neil? Alright, Bobby?
I'll make the motion. Will you approve Neil's highway report?
Second.
Thank you Bobby and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, if it's alright with the board, we have, um, uh, two. Uh, people who have expressed interest in.
Sure.
Um. Working, uh, with DPW guys over the summer. Um. Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have a concern. These, this technically isn't our personnel, but if we have a concern, do we share that? Or we, will we go into executive session to discuss something pertaining? Okay, so if.
It is a personnel issue, aye.
Okay, okay. So if there is a concern about us, uh, about one of the two individuals here. Uh, we would need to go into executive session, session to discuss that. Um, I don't have any.
I don't. Neil, do you have any issues with these two? Seeing one of your son, I hope not, but.
And I will say another one, really good worker and that's the one I was asking about, so.
Okay, um, uh, then if that's, uh, when, when is this, when will the starting date be for them? Basically whenever they're available?
June. Yesterday.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, in that case, looking for motion to hire.
Second.
Tyler, do we need names that we're gonna hire, or do you want to, this motion to hire the two individuals?
Yeah, two individuals.
Early in, huh? Well, one of them's had to finish school anyways.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you should have the two names, their start dates, their end dates.
Okay, uh, so the one, you go with, um, his son first?
So it's, uh, is currently, is Ja- Charles John Stoll? And effective, when, that'll start? When Neil?
Next.
Monday?
Next Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
Starting effective six seventeen?
An end date? You really can't, you know.
When the budget is out.
Bye. Well.
No, we don't have to put an end date.
Go up to November, December, you know.
Yeah.
Right, we did that last year, what that we extended, cause, based on the budget and based on the, the workload still.
What I thought I heard Andy say is we should have an end date.
Doing?
At least note that it's a temporary.
Well, yeah, temporary positions, yes, I'm sorry.
Alright.
That's how it was posted, is it?
Yep.
Temporary position, yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion when you, a second?
Second.
For hiring, uh, I always call him Charlie.
Yeah, it's Charlie.
Charles. Uh, second was someone over there?
We have.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, you wanna do the other one as well?
It's Tanner Thompson York.
Tanner, Tom, okay, yeah, okay, Thompson York.
Yeah, Tanner's the first name. Uh, so I am looking for a motion to hire, uh, Tanner Thompson York.
Effective date, Neil, would be.
Probably right after.
When school?
He could start as early as Monday, so, you know, until he gets his.
Well, he's, he's still in class on Monday, so let's call it Tuesday, the, um, eighteenth. Because technically that's when he wouldn't have classes and he may have tests.
Effective sixty eighteen and he's a temporary positionist.
Alright, thank you for the motion. Second from?
Second.
Ben, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, can I please collect those back, please? Thank you. Two copies over here. One and two. Thank you. Alright, great. Uh, final report, sewer department report is there. Um, I did reach out to, um. Kenny, uh, to figure out whatever our March numbers were, but, um, I've been. The, what I've been doing here has been each, each month is plugging in the latest number. I talked with chief about doing that as well, so I'm gonna try to set up something. A template so we can sort of see this year, last year and get all the data, so we can see sort of a running tally on years with the chief as well for calls and stuff.
Starts calls and.
Yeah. Um, it was obviously a, a lot of income, um, in May, which is a summer month, so that makes sense. Um, otherwise, that's, uh, your report.
That's something I also would like to get from the justices.
Okay.
To see what they generate in, in fines on a monthly basis.
I.
I know I do the, the annual report, but it's a lot easier to get a summary.
I do get summaries monthly from each of the judges.
I do too, but I didn't get them this month.
We require from the court clerk, not the justice.
Supposed to submit it by June tenth, by the tenth of the month.
Because they're both elected, it's just, the court clerk, we could request it from.
One's elected, the other one's appointed.
Okay, but he, I mean, but either way, is that a difference in?
I can understand the request, we'll just look at.
Okay.
Well, they do provide us a, a, a report, but it's supposed to be, I know legally it's supposed to be submitted by the tenth of the month. And there's no report this month from either judges.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's always a clear pipe.
Alright. Um, unless there's any questions, I'm looking for motion to approve the sewer reports. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Craig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. Finally, the water report.
Um, just, uh, as you see there, the, we were able to get work done in the GAC building that had been longstanding. Uh, if anyone had not been down there, the balance tank, uh, there were clearly a lot of leaks in the welding that has been repaired.
Yep.
Uh, other issues are being addressed in that building that have been issues for, I'd say, a year, year and a half, that are finally, um, being addressed. I think there's still some more work to be done there, correct?
They're putting people out, that's in. They're putting electrical outlets in?
The what?
Electrical outlets.
Uh I think it's more, this is more dealing with the, no, but it's more dealing with the humidity issues, the condensation, the uh tank leaking.
Was that an issue though during the, when they were doing the?
The hose, hose bibs, it was a hose bib issue.
That too, there's um, they did, they, one thing they did is fix the sample taps.
Yeah.
I know there was an issue with those, so it's easier, there's like, but instead of the pegboard that looks like cardboard, it's actually gonna be accessible now.
And I do wanna make sure it's on the record that um DOH Rick Mis- uh Rick Mistico, Tim Vickersen, Rick has been out here?
I don't know, Vickersen.
I can't remember, Vickersen's been out here and there's one other, I, I, I don't think it's Ri- I don't think it's Rick, I think he's DEC, they've been amazing, they've been very supportive, pushing. Um it's, it, just wanna make sure it's on the record, they've been very helpful. Alright, um looking for a motion.
Motion.
To approve the water report, Brian and second Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you, minutes were sent out, um unless you have any changes, I'm looking for motion to approve the May fourteenth regular reading. Brian and Ben, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, trustee committee reports, Vanessa.
None at this time.
Two quick things, uh one, Greenway update on the, or let me start with um, Rick did not afford an email from the Greenway website, he included Rob on it with me.
I saw that.
Um it was a really tense situation to read, an elderly gentleman who's a bird watcher. Found the Greenway on a database and decided to drive here, uh there was a man with two dogs that were surrounding him, he was frightened, he pulled out pepper spray. Uh he almost had to use it on the dogs, the owner of the dogs was mocking him and he kinda guess was like, I'll use it on you too. But he said, you know, I'm never coming back, I don't feel safe, I will say there is an issue with the leash law and the Greenway. That needs to be addressed somehow, uh the guy said he was under the impression it was a dog run, which I, people make up whatever they won't believe. Um the guy that was letting his dogs run, so I just wanna bring that up, that we should probably, I don't have a solution at this point, but we should. Probably consider what we're doing with leash laws, especially when it comes to public safety.
In the village and that's on the vill- in the village limits, so that's.
But I, I think partially maybe putting out there to citizens to remind people, hey, there is a leash law, even if you're in the woods, in the village.
Yeah.
Um signs, yeah, I think we need to work on improving that because.
Especially down at the Greenway.
Especially there, cause people are doing it more and more frequently, um and I don't want people to get harmed. Uh the other part, an apology, this has been rolling around the back of my truck. I never get, I'm never gonna adult well, um, these are plans, the Greenway committee uh looked at from B and L. For the boat launch on the southern end, I should stand up with this a little bit, there's a few things on here that aren't going to be a thing, but so. Uh down here is the, I'll pass it on to you, this is the former waterworks site, this is the concrete ber- um sister that's covered. They wanna fill with sand, this is like a stage, we need to put parking around here, clean up the debris, uh this will be overflow parking for the. Baseball fields, football fields here, uh they wanna put a chain link fence here, this part will not be built, so ignore that. Uh some parking over there additionally, the idea is come up over the trail and go down and have a loop where you can turn around to take your boats out. With five parking spots there, so that you can leave your vehicle there when you pull out your boat, um and it adds the ability to. For people to spend time in the village and take out here instead of elsewhere, so just a quick. Update on some of those improvements, this is a grant we've had around for a long, long time.
Neil, have you gotten to see any of this?
Not yet, it's been rolling around the back of my truck, like one of my kids handing in homework.
Interesting idea on, on the uh, the, the sister, the old sister.
Yeah, it's just that way we don't have to demolish it, they would fill it with, I can pass this around if you guys wanna, um. Basically, they were going to do another loop to the boat launch, so you have a second one for fishing access there and a boat, um they call it, I forget what they call it, it's like a wood. Steps that you drag your boat up, um for the amount of money that's in there, they do not think that's gonna be doable, there's also a small. Um. Wetland in that area, so they don't wanna deal with going through that complication, uh the turnaround spot would be ideal, it's one way. So you can pull in and park and not, um and there'd be a gate as well, so if we needed to close it off. Perhaps at night, or if there was an issue, we could do that, uh as long as we're opening it up at a later point.
We should definitely talk, cause I know Neil and I have talked about this area down here as well.
Well, this grant is, yeah, kinda gonna, this is the plan, I know the Greenway committee gave it a green light, this grant is one that we, if we don't spend this, it's gonna.
Goes away, right?
Yeah.
Uh flooding stuff happens and that.
Yep, this will be designed to take the flooding if it needs to, um yeah, it'll be. They.
I haven't seen an engineer firm worth being a job.
This is a different firm.
Um there'd be, yeah, either way, it's a use of the space down there, it's a way for us to have another, uh oh and the, the actual launches would be. Inexpensive where if there's a high water flooded issue and they do wash down the shore, they're easily replaceable, or washed away, I should say. Um, they said they wouldn't have to do much work on the shore there either, what's that?
Nothing, nothing, I'm sorry.
Definitely could've lost that one.
Thank you, Brian.
Nevermind.
Um, Bobby.
Uh the only thing I have is, I just wanted to bring up discussion again regarding. The dedication of either this boardroom or the actual building itself in honor of Anne Reborn. We had approved that, and I think Andy, you were, you looked into it, whether we could. Do the boardroom, cause it's the courtroom as well, and that, and you found out that it was acceptable or?
It is, you're gonna have to kind of review that with the justices, it is their courtroom as well. It serves as the boardroom, if the entire building were to be honored, first let me start by saying, there's no state law. Or requirements associated with dedicating or naming a certain public place in honor of a person, you do it at the local level.
Okay.
Um so, you know, it's within your discretion to do that. But since this room is used both as the meeting room as well as the courtroom, you have to coordinate with the. Court on that, the entire building were to be honored, that's.
So is it, so if we did something in the, like in the lobby per se to make, you know, in the honor, in honor of Anne, in the. You know, naming, I don't know if we need the building or just.
Well, I would, I would prefer the whole building.
Yeah.
Just to be, you know.
So I mean, rather than that way, it keep, it, it takes the, the justices out of the picture, correct?
I'll give, I'll give you an example, I, I did serve as a town attorney down in Orange County, the town of McComeau. And you walk into their town hall and immediately it's the George F Irvin Government Center, he was a former supervisor a long time, there's this picture. And the entire building is known as that, that houses, the police department, the courtroom, the all the village, uh for town offices.
That's what I, I would think that's, I would, I would like to propose we do that.
Yeah, I, I would totally back the, do the building.
And if I, you know, and then from that, we'd have to do, uh we'd have to, I'd like to, you know, we find money to do a plaque or whatever and then. Do a, a dedication, a formal dedication with Anne's family and notify them and have them present and we did that some. So if we can get that, I'd like to make a motion to get that and it works, if that's feasible, so.
What, do we need a motion to sort of formalize pursuing this?
Yeah, it, I think the motion should be to, you know, put together what would be required.
Okay.
Then we should just outline what will be done, make that clear, the expense, and then probably at next month's meeting formally approve.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted, cause I know we talked about it and it's been gone, time's gone by and I just wanna make sure it doesn't, that we don't drop the ball.
Mind taking a lead with Andy on that?
Not at all, not at all.
Alright, great, thank you, thank you Bobby.
Reach out to her family as well to make sure they don't have any issues with it first, before I, we do that, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I've talked to her son and he's a hundred percent behind it, you know, so, but I just wanna talk to her uh, her, her brother who lives in the village as well, so.
Alright.
Okay?
Brilliant, thank you.
Alright, thank.
Ben?
I don't have anything.
Kevin?
Yeah, um we received a complaint, was actually on the Huzik Rising page, I think they tagged Rob and Brian, I don't know if you. Happen to see that about uh signage for our parking lots. And that people are blowing through town and they're not stopping because there's no parking.
Oh, um, yeah, there were, people had responded, so I.
Yeah, it got out, it got out of hand after a while, but anyway, I went back and checked and there actually is parking signs, but in a lot of cases. Except for a few, that the signs are behind trees, cause the trees have grown up, here's one picture of one on. Church Street, which is across McCumbrel and Farms.
Oh, yeah.
And also up by uh the Cheney Library, that one also is covered up by trees.
Just as if I had the um LWRP plan that, or um that's been put together, it, it includes. Finding and we will be eligible for that grant funding for improving and in, and adding and fixing wayfinding signs, so. That's one option that we should probably address where the inventory of them are now, so we can try to fix that as a.
In the lower parking lot isn't signed at all, the one uh down by the river, by the Greenway, so something to think about.
Yeah, we should probably do that with the, that's a low hanging fruit goal, that we can get money for relatively easily.
Yeah.
According to.
Are, are parking signs normally white or blue? Cause I feel like these are white, but I feel like in other municipalities, they're always blue.
Those are, those are put in by the, the state during the twenty-two project.
Okay.
Depends on the municipality.
Well, I don't know if there's like a standard that will draw more attention if it's.
Are those the village trees that are in the way of the village parking sign?
Um, well, yeah, they're a part of the twenty-two project also.
Are they?
Simply, we can trim the trees.
What's that? Trim and back face, trim and back face.
It's either move the, either trim.
Or move the sign. Trim the tree or move the sign.
I'm afraid like your hole's gonna be like, shoo, maybe like a little bit of tree.
You know, but that could bring tourists, all the tree art, yeah, up here, right?
Alright, any else Kevin?
No, um just the summer concerts begin Jul- or uh June twenty-ninth from four to eight.
Do we have that packet somewhere?
I just, I just did these, so.
Okay.
I don't know.
I saw a poster at the uh current evening today.
Nice.
It's Ju- what, June twenty-ninth, July twenty-second in August.
Twentieth and.
In July twentieth, I'm sorry, August third.
Great, great.
Also, on, on the uh, I did have to send the speakers to the gazebo to uh. Uh, what is the name of the company up in Clifton Park?
Parkway, Parkway Music. They're phenomenal.
They're looking at them, there might be a, a problem with the crossover. On those two speakers. Obviously, I think somebody plugged something wrong, that wasn't, there was more power than their.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. So are they looking at it now?
They are, they have them.
Can you um give them a call to see what is that and how much it's gonna cost, so he can?
Yeah, he's gonna, I don't think he's actually got into it yet, so.
Okay. Alright, yeah, they do great stuff, they do great stuff, brilliant, thank you. Alright, uh old business, I do not have an update on the municipal building phone system, except that I have finally reached out. Uh to Jackie, one of my, uh many I'm getting caught up on, and I have not heard back yet, so I'll try again. Uh I think I have to call her back like ten times to even out, about a time she reaches out to me. Um but I hope to have a sit down with her where we talk through everything and understand everything that's going on, so we can make uh proper changes needed, so. Hopefully next meeting we'll actually have a plan on that. Uh new business, do you have the, the um special inspection bids? Oh, sweet, just right in front of me, um so. The three special inspections are related to the work that has to be done for the highway garage.
Which can I note Neil's comment in his report on, how do you really feel?
I left it, huh, huh, alright.
I appreciate, I appreciate the candid, you know.
But I, I get it, because I've seen uh, I've seen Neil uh engineer some of the engineers like on the snow street project, well, why don't we just do this, this, this?
Yeah.
So uh I get the frustration.
You don't have to be an engineer.
No?
You just need to stay.
We'll get you, we'll get you a stamp, Neil. Uh we have three, um, three quotes from Dante. From Atlantic Testing Laboratories and from CME, uh you can see the price is here.
Mm-hmm.
Um the CME came in the lowest, um at eighty-five, eighty-nine, thirty-six, uh for this, uh this is part of the funds that we have budgeted. Um which we knew we'd be budgeting to cover the additional costs, sorry Neil, I feel like I'm stabbing with the dagger every time I say something about this. Um but we're looking to um.
Just to make sure it's structurally sound and safe and everything is, okay.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Uh there's various points, they have to do inspections of various things and that's just part of the process.
Did we review the qualifications of the bids to make sure they're qualified to do the inspections that we're asking them to do?
We are doing this ourselves, so we just need to enter a contract with them, because this doesn't, this is not being paid for by the grant, this is being paid for by the village.
But if we're asking them to do an inspection, then they should be able to do that inspection.
I mean, they're at, they're, they're based in New York, so they're out of Albany, um Andy, you've reviewed these, right? Or you reviewed the CME one?
I reviewed the CME one, I'm familiar with that term.
As, as long as they're qualified to do what we're asking them to do, I think that's all I'm asking, is that.
Yes, yes.
And the issue with the other, with the highway garage was they were out of state, not in-state, right, in-state business, correct?
Right, right, and also that one's being covered with DASNY funds because it's a grant, so there's a bunch of different rules and. We're basically just following our own um rules on, you know, getting three bids and.
So the three bids amount are thirteen, one, twenty-one, twelve thousand, six, eighty, and eighty-five, eighty-nine, thirty-six. Based on that, I'd make the motion, we accept the CME associates bid of eighty-five, eighty-nine, thirty-six.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Could be in line with Craig's.
Sure.
Simply subject to confirmation of uh authority to conduct business in the state of New York, it's looked with penalties.
That, that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Put that in there too, right?
All the words.
Yeah.
All the words. Do you want a minute to lift it over, we can come back to it or?
I'm fine with doing it.
Okay, uh any further discussion?
Good point though Craig, for sure.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
It was a mosquito.
Carrie, second, you're super excited about it, um and also uh I, Andy, I'm look, I guess it would be a motion to. Rebid the HVAC and plumbing contracts for the highway garage, correct? So I'm looking for that motion.
Motion.
Thank you Vanessa.
Second.
Second, Brian, any further discussion on that, sorry Neil, I feel like I just stabbed you again, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, alright, um next thing, we have a resolution uh creating the grant administrator role. This comes from uh some dialogues we've had, Ben and I and Denise, about the fact that Denise is doing a ton. Overseeing all of the levels of grants, um grants that we uh have going right now, um. Trying to think, um, uh so this is a resolution creating office of grant administrator for the village of Huzik Falls. Um, Andy, I don't need to read all the whereas, correct?
Correct, just the body of.
So now therefore be resolved by the board of trustees of the village of Huzik Falls in regular session duly convenable follows. The village of Huzik Falls Board of Trustees hereby creates a village office of grant administrator. The duties of such grant administrator position shall include general administrative duties in connection with various public grants, as may be awarded to the village. Such grant administration position shall be appointed, uh shall be an appointed position to be made by the mayor. Subject to approval by the board of trustees, the salary for such grant administrator position shall be established by the board of trustees. So I am looking for uh that resolution to be offered.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Thank you Bobby, second and by Ben. Um any discussion on this, I know we talked about this in a previous meeting or meetings in the past. Um this will be something that shows up, uh assuming it passes, in our um uh business meeting, our reorganization meeting at, at the beginning, in April.
Annual.
Um and uh we will set the salary after the creation of this and reset it as needed, you know, here and out, as part of the regular organizational meeting.
I think it's also a fluid position, where depending on the number of grants that you have, how much work needs to be done.
That makes sense.
Be set at, at that point, with, with the ability to, to be a little bit more.
Exactly right, so when you're looking at it annually, uh putting your budget together, maybe seeing what's going on.
Round number, if you put ten thousand dollars out there this year, because she's doing fifteen grants, if they're down to four next year, maybe it's thirty-five hundred. But it's, you know.
It's all relative.
I, I just think, it depends on, on the amount of work that's being done, I don't know, I think it leaves us.
Right, I think it, it leaves us with uh room to, to uh move a little bit.
Uh so, uh oh, wait, please have a roll call vote for this.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Bushner?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I am trying to find um the email that we had discussed, Ben, do you remember what the salary was going to be stated as?
Uh I can look it up.
Please do that and we'll come back to that, so we do need to set a a annual salary on that.
Okay.
Andy, would we, in setting the annual salary, make it um. Could we make it retro retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year, June June one?
I think you can.
Okay. Uh we'll come back to that, Ben, when you find out, my apologies, because I I meant to have that earlier.
Yes. Yeah, I apologize as well, I should have had it.
Alright, so um we have another resolution pertaining to the intermunicipal agreement uh with the town of Huzick concerning the assessor duties. This is a resolution pertaining to intermunicipal agreement with the town of Huzick concerning assessor duties, it's like I just said that. Now therefore be resolved by the uh the Board of Trustees of the village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convene as follows. The Board of Trustees hereby authorizes and directs the village attorney in conjunction with and at the direction of the village mayor and village treasurer. To prepare a draft of an intermunicipal agreement by and between the village of Huzick Falls and the town of Huzick. To address the additional duties performed by the town of Huzick assessor in light of the village of Huzick Falls. Ceasing to be a separate assessing unit, including associated compensation considerations with respect. To such additional duties uh of the town assessor position. Such draft intermunicipal agreement shall include among other things, the total hours per week or other appropriate time period during which. Town assessor shall devote to village tax matters, rate of compensation for such services, maintenance of town assessor's employment status. As a town employee, insurance matters, retroactive effective date. And schedule of such payment by the village uh to the town. Such draft intermunicipal agreement shall be reviewed by the village board of trustees prior to being approved, uh being provided to the town. Uh and upon such board of trustee review and approval as to form and content to be thereafter provided to the town of Huzick for reviewing consideration. Looking for that to be introduced, offered. Craig, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you Kevin, any questions or further discussion on this?
Make any wish what Kevin brought up, because that I think is incredibly valid point, that especially as taxes have gone up and especially, you know. Um I pay town tax too, and if it's all gonna be the same roll, I'm not sure, I like the idea of spending extra money. Because we're already paying, we're paying twice basically.
Fair point, no question. Um I still wanna m- move forward with this, but I think um. We definitely need to have some conversations and obviously we'll have some conversations with the town uh supervising the attorney as as we go through this process. But your considerations are heard, your concerns are heard. Uh if there's no other discussion, we'll move to a roll call vote, please.
Trusty Pine?
Yes.
Trusty O'Malley?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
Yes, sorry.
Trusty Lewis?
Yes.
Trusty Bushner?
No.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan?
I'm going to abstain because uh I'm related to the assessor.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you, uh passes five to one. Um I I did find, uh thank you, um the salary that we had um. Uh considered ahead of time was uh for five thousand dollars a year, uh the for this coming year.
This coming year.
Uh retroactive uh June first, the beginning of our fiscal year, so I'd entertain a motion to set the annual salary for the grant administrator role at five thousand for this fiscal year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you Ben, thank you Vanessa, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh post, carries, thank you, thank you Ben. So we had one bid uh for the tractor from J C Tractors, we expected. Um the bid was, I think, a little bit lower than we'd expected. Twenty five five eight oh. Neil, any comments?
What's this for the silver plant?
Here is the uh bid if you wanna see it. Must have been a very long bid opening.
What the? I thought you had a picture of it, I was, you know.
Done, alright, got it.
Neil, are you hap- is this, you're happy with this?
Yeah, it's came in way underneath state contract, but.
Okay.
And you might actually get it, this is great.
And this is coming out uh last year, silver funding account, not this year.
Yep.
You said there's a trade in amount, you s- uh does it overdo that? Kevin or Ben?
Ten thousand.
Cool. Great. Um in that case, I am looking for a motion to, what is it, to accept the bid, right?
Yeah.
For the purchase of the truck.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you Ben, thank you Brian, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries, thank you. Uh Mark? Mark, Mark!
Come out wherever you want.
You had two things that you wanted to discuss, um the first pertaining to the sidewalk and properties along Classic Street.
I just wanna make sure everybody's comfortable, just continuing to move forward with that, uh the next step is to say you win the court.
With uh our favorite owner? Oh, but that is prime exclusive real estate.
Riverfront property?
Yes, they do.
To um, Andy, um. That is a hu- that that location is a huge concern of mine.
Yeah.
Um. Is there anything else we can do to push forward on this?
A couple of points to make, one. I don't believe the property owner resides within the village, correct?
He does not.
Down in New Jersey is my recollection.
Yes.
So bringing a village court faction. Might be problematic, village courts generally are court of limited jurisdiction, they only have the ability to enforce. They only have the ability to issue a bench warrant to require appearances within a very limited area. Um if someone resides out of state, it's very often very difficult to get relief in village court.
Oh, he'll come, he'll bring pictures.
Well, who met, I will tell you this.
Eight by ten claws.
He did not come to any of the earlier court proceedings, found a nation issue despite being required to do so, and he had multiple excuses not to come up. So I think you can anticipate that. I'll also note that I know DOT looked at this recently. Um their engineers. At least in the email I reviewed, they'll find that it's something of concern, it's not immediate. Health and safety issue in their opinion, it's certainly something to continue to monitor. I do have some questions about who, it's certainly a state highway, but who owns the sidewalk?
Property owner.
Who's the property owner?
The property owner owns the sidewalk.
Even on the state highway?
Right.
Where's the right of way end, or not the right of way, where's this?
Well, it it really depends on the the highway right of way and we'd have to look at that, who maintains the sidewalk?
Supposed to be owner. Supposed to be the owner.
Uh okay, who uh the DOT construct the sidewalk when they have the roadway?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So. They, all these issues have to be addressed, so.
According to his foundation, the former foundation of the foundation for the former building collapsed, correct? Eroded and that's bringing the sidewalk with it, okay.
My fear is when it's gonna be during probably most likely a heavy s- heavy rainstorm, that we will get. Uh and when that goes.
Yeah.
It's automatically going to affect the twenty two.
Yep.
And and that's why it's surprising, I think, with with DOT's engineers.
The response of the DOT, I think, is absurd.
It's it's very surprising.
Right.
Well, so so should we contact them formally and tell them that we don't wanna agree with their response? And put the burden back on them once.
And and the other.
And explain why we think that 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 belongs back on them.
Is that something we could take as eminent domain?
Let me take over maintenance of the sidewalk from two, right?
Well, I I understand, but if we're, I mean, it's a it's a it's a danger, it's a risk to the residents, we don't wanna just say, wow, we because we have to pay for it, we don't wanna fix it, I understand that, just.
Well, if the fix involves going underneath Route twenty two.
Oh, I know it does.
It's undermined under the sidewalk.
Right, that's what I'm saying, then that's why the state needs to come back.
Yeah.
And and we need to explain that to them, that this isn't the sidewalk we.
I I I hope we wouldn't have to explain to them, I I think they understand that.
Well, they they've given us an opinion and.
You would have to explain it because.
In in writing.
They went out and physically inspected, they looked at it, and that was their opinion.
They had blinders on.
I called channel ten, drag them down there, and then they go.
No, no, still, let's contact the state.
Yeah.
And and just see, I mean, and push back on it.
It it sounds like there needs to be an official memo from the mayor with a bunch of pictures and.
Well, I I'd go one step further, mayor and the the village department, uh you know, they've got the P E, with all due respect to P Es. After their name, uh we want to have some kind of uh technical opinion.
Okay.
Uh responding to that, saying that in our opinion it is an issue, I think that's something that may. Make DOT pay attention, particularly the concern about the safety of the the public roadway.
Alright.
Realize village court is limited jurisdiction, it's it's very difficult to get any action, it's very, it's limited usually to just monetary penalties. If the village wanted to move forward and get some kind of what's called conjunctive relief to require certain activities to occur, that that's a more. Involved undertaking, you have to go to state supreme court, and given that it's a state highway, you're probably also uh naming the state.
Nothing simple, right, basically, it's not a simple.
Unfortunately, these things are not, and I think Craig's idea of going back to the state with um some some technical response.
We could we could also point out that they're using, it's a truck route, and they're using it also as a detour before the trucks.
Detour.
Yeah. Yeah.
For uh sixty seven.
Good, now's the time, now's the time.
And it's gonna be that way for over a year.
Alright, let's work on getting a letter out this week.
Let me just add, it took us years to get a liquor store, we can't have it swallowed up by a sinkhole.
Point taken, Brian, listen, we're taking.
We'll have a large to fix this.
That's how we survive being on this court.
When I come in each day, just kick my butt so we can get that uh that out.
Thank you Bobby.
Yeah, I mean, that's something you you want, I mean, Andy's been the one who's helped me with this other stuff as far as.
If you guys wanna put it together, well, please do it. Yeah, thank you guys.
Alright.
Alright, um you also wanna bring up the hazards mitigation meeting?
Uh uh the hazard, we have to have that paperwork submitted, I'm trying to drag Neil in, that's so we can finish the paperwork.
On one guy.
Well, um. Yeah, um. So we're meeting tomorrow, we have to the the initial paperwork in this week, so.
Get now to the.
Uh the hazard mitigation, I just wanted, I wanted to bring the board up to speed a little bit, because one of the things I took upon myself to add on. Uh as a project, um it's something, Rob, you had alluded to about your concern about the stormwater drainage. On that part of the village. Uh we know we have some capacity issues by what happened in the twenty seventeen flood on this side of the village. So I am putting it in as an overall project as just stormwater uh drainage, you know, I talked to Neil a little bit about it. So we'll put it in as a as a project, we'll give it a like a priority level. So that's gonna be something they'll be looking for us to address concerns, you know, going forward, Neil's already talking about, you know. Basically, starting at the river, working our way back to open things up as much as we can, we know we have an issue with the railroad. You know, the water's underneath the the railroad tracks down there, so.
Raveled out, for, it's actually, yeah, they're down there probably every other month to try to, because it sinks in again.
So. Uh the things that are on there from the previous uh hazard mitigation program, which was seven years ago or something like that. Is all of the Woods Brook stuff, so you know, we're gonna be able to show some progress on that, because the whole idea is that you're naming these things. And then in the interim, in the next five years, you're showing you're showing some progress. So we'll be able to show progress on the Woods Brook.
Yeah.
Adding that other one on.
That's great.
I think that was just about, just to let you know, it becomes part of the countywide uh hazard mitigation program. It's all designed because it's recognizing the fact that, you know, we are in a in a time right now where we're getting uh heavier rainfalls. And just heavier events, I guess, in general.
Alright, thank you, sorry I had this so late in the agenda, I should have moved it up to the earlier new business, so yeah. Thank you. Um looking for a motion to declare a surplus and use until sale is complete. Uh and advertise the sale of two flatbed pickup trucks, a two thousand five Ford one ton flatbed and two thousand five Chevy one ton flatbed.
So move.
Second.
Thank you Bobby, thank you Ben, any further discussion? Neil gives a thumbs up. There you go, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, thank you. We have um a a liquor license request uh before us. To make concern, this is to verify that we received a copy of the New York State Liquor License Authority thirty day advance notice application for miniature mountain LLC, Huzick Falls Country Club. At seventy three Richmond Avenue, Huzick Falls, New York, they have met all zoning and planning requirements uh to open and operate, please let us know if you need further assistance, thank you, uh Marie. Um we uh I can just approve this, correct?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Right now, the country club is operating under the Huzick Falls Country Club license.
The nonprofit, yes.
Until this is approved.
So that is, that is now approved. Um we did the hire, uh we have discussion regarding a request to refund a water bill, I had sent that out to you guys earlier, I know it's your favorite thing to discuss water bills at the end. Of a meeting, always your favorite. Um this one came uh from, and you guys have a copy of this. One twenty Church Street, um.
I mean, from reading through it, I know we, especially this year, we've been trying to reinforce the precedent of if it's an internal leak that we're not. Doing anything with it, I think that's what we've done with every single one of these this year, am I correct in saying that? I mean, and after beating it, I don't think, you know, we can make exceptions, because we've heard a lot of people that have brought up a lot of hardships that have come of it, but it is, at the end of the day, we. You know, that slippery slope of doing it for one, you have to do for everybody. It's it's gotta be fair across the board, somebody.
But you were doing it for rent, like for the renters who weren't taking care of their property.
But even in other, there's been others though this year that we've, I think we've gotten the point of if it's inside the house, it's, you know, it's.
I will say in her defense, she's almost eighty years old, and she can't even hear well, so I mean.
But I think unfortunately, a lot of leaks are discovered when a bill comes that's really high.
And that's.
And that's what unfortunately is part of it.
You know, and she's upstairs, so her company and stuff doesn't go up there, so they're not gonna hear it for her. And it was fixed as soon as she knew.
She lived downstairs?
No, her bedroom is upstairs, but like her company and like the dancers and the parents, they're all downstairs.
They're all downstairs.
You know, you literally, you had to be there to hear it, she can't hear it, she has hearing aids, and she is almost eighty. And it was fixed within three days.
So the request um is to, uh I guess, because it has been paid. Uh refunds uh the difference between sort of the average of the previous, which.
Approximately a hundred and fifty dollars.
Approximately a hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, in in I unfortunately, I I, well, to Brian's point, i- it's the amount is immaterial, it's the responsibility falls upon the owner. And even the rental property, the landlords were made aware of it, and they and it took them several months to fix theirs, unfortunately, I mean, in this case, she rediscovered it, it was discovered. And she fixed it in the short term, but at the same time, it's, the only way I find out if I have a leak would be the same way.
Right, I mean, I feel bad.
Oh, I do too, I understand.
Somebody was, you know.
We can hear our toilets if they're.
No, I was saying, but there's someone in a wheelchair, can't get upstairs, doesn't hear it, I I. I understand and I feel bad, but I I know we have to sometimes make decisions where we can't.
You can't set precedent, that's the problem.
Yeah, we can't, we have to take compassion out of some decisions we make, and that's hard.
Um i- i- it's, you know, it's up to the board, we have the authority, I know that we've set a precedent so far this year. Um I understand that we have the authorities aboard to make the decision and look at these on a case by case basis. Um I think the situation in my mind does warrant uh the uh the the refund, even though that's against precedent, but I understand the situation in this in this setting. She lives there, she can't hear it, and it's not a huge amount, not that that would be a decision making, but this is really about um looking at the individual. Uh so I understand that we've been setting a precedent, I I like that we've been setting a precedent. Um but we do have the uh authority as a board to make decisions on a case by ca- case basis, so I will be uh voting in favor of uh returning or the one fifty, refunding the one fifty. But again, if you guys go against us, totally fine.
I agree with you, uh because some of these other cases we had this year were so egregious that they 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 knew there was a problem, and they let it fester for three or four months. Even after they knew they had a problem, in this case, it's an elderly resident who uh keeps a nice property in town and in favor of waiving the hundred and fifty dollars.
Anyone else wanna opine or do the um?
I say waive it too.
I just, I think we're setting, I think we're going down a bad path there. Because this is the one, there'll be other exceptions down the road, there are gonna be, you know, and if there's one we decide against down the road. You know, our justification, this could come back, this could possibly be haunting us, I we I wanna protect the interests of the village.
Understood.
I I just think it's a poor choice to approve it. Um or else going forward, we should approve anybody's waiver that comes in.
But if each one is case by case, and the final decision is up to us, so if we do it this time because we feel like she deserves it, we get it done, then the next time we approach it again.
Well, there, when we deny one down the road, I feel like that opens us up possibly for liability.
I'd like to ask Andy if he has any.
Absolutely.
Uh my thought on this.
No pressure, by the way.
He's not gonna give you.
No, he wouldn't care.
The the sympathy factor, I can understand, if the board, and you're correct, you can look at each of these on a case by case basis, but the one thing. The sympathy factor, I can understand, if the board, and you're correct, you can look at each of these on a case-by-case basis, but the one thing any board has to be. Uh, is consistent and make their decisions on a very clear fact record, so if you're gonna go in this direction. Um, my suggestion would be not to act this evening, and we have an appropriate written record created. Uh, differentiating this from the earlier ones which the board rejected, and why there's a basis, a rational basis to. Elect to to a refund in this case.
I I think that's.
Otherwise, you're looking arbitrary.
I think that's a great idea, I mean, if somebody in favor of doing this wants to go back and look at what we've done this past year, there's probably been five or six. And. Put them together and show why this is different.
That's fine.
Then we can talk about it next, there's no, the bill's paid, there's no immediate concern, there's no fines coming due.
Right.
We can look at it next month, if there's, somebody wants to take and compare. The five that we've had in the last year.
Do you wanna put a motion up to table this till next meeting?
I'll make that motion, yes.
Alright, correct.
Okay, well, who's gonna, who's gonna take the initiative to go look into that and and do that?
I'll look, I'll look at those.
Okay, I'll get you, I'll get you the information from previous meetings if you need it, uh, reach out. Alright, thank you Kevin. So the motion is on, uh, uh, motion is up to uh tables till next meeting, need a second?
Second.
Thank you Vanessa. Uh, all in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Alright, the ayes have it, so it is tabled until next meeting, four to three.
I was gonna make a motion to reject it. You guys beat me to it.
Probably would've gone the same way.
Don't hey, don't kill me in the parking lot, I just think that we should refund none.
No, I I un- I understand, I absolutely understand your point, I understand that.
There there, I've I've seen you give people who bought homes here, you know, you waived the previous bill. Because you want a good reputation, I mean, she's lived here for thirty, forty years.
We have a motion, we're gonna, we're gonna do.
Yeah, we'll move it at next meeting. Um, we have uh a request. Um, for a handicap parking space with a sign to whom I concern. Uh, this patient has been under my care, this is a a doctor's note from uh Dr. Carroll, Twin Rivers, this is at fifty-one Elm Street apartment two. They're looking for a uh parking, a handicap, a permanent handicapped. Uh, location of metal uh placard near her apartment, so she can park as close as possible to the apartment. Uh, due to the the things listed out here, I don't know if I'm supposed to say it out loud. But Neil, you know, you're familiar with this request, right? What is the uh availability and potential to do it there, is it even, is it even legally allowed in that spot?
Park on the side of the building. Same side as the train tracks. That's as close as she's gonna get.
Can we put a spot there, do we ha- do we have that property or is that train track?
I would have to see exactly how much uh. Odell's store.
Yeah.
The old store.
And where's she wanna, uh, uh, no parking, or a?
Oh, you're saying along, is it on Lyman Street or Elm Street?
It's on the corner.
Lyman Street side.
Well, they'd be pretty tough there.
That's really tough.
She wants Elm Street though, doesn't she?
She does.
Well, that's right, that'd be right in front of the building, and they don't see.
You can't have.
That's close to the railroad.
Overnight parking. Downtown business, even though there's no business on that street anymore.
But if we pass a local law for this, would that supersede that, just for this?
Well, there is a business there, right across the tracks, there's a business.
What what I don't understand, if we.
Right, still, but I mean.
If we make this a law, and someday, there's not gonna be a need for a handicap parking spot there.
And that's the thing, we've, we've gone around today, taking down handicap parking signs where people's moved from.
Check the one down on Upper Church. Jeff Odell's.
So. Andy, what's procedure on something like this?
Well, generally, any kind of parking regulation or restriction is done through a local law, we wanna take a look at that.
So it sounds like we just need to review the location, table it for this uh meeting, review the location and and circle back.
So is there a way?
Making sure it's feasible.
Yeah, just, because I don't even think it's feasible based on what I've seen what you've said.
I mean, there's a.
Dave Manning lived down in. Oh, or.
Right.
Capeno's old place. We could hook him up on the light pole there, with the understanding, he's not to park on the street during the winter time. You know, no overnight parking, there's overnight parking, no overnight parking on that street, to the train tracks.
Just looking at the Google Street View, there's a patch of grass against the building, I mean, is this something the landlord or owner could. Delegate a space to them on private property and we don't have to be involved, I mean, there's garbage bins there in Google Street View. It's right by the sidewalk on the side.
That's what I used to do, is put it on the side of the building off of Elm Street.
Yeah, there's, there'd be room there, I mean, it wouldn't not be obstructing.
Off a railroad.
Yes, cause that side.
Can somebody reach out and just have a conversation with her and see if that's a possibility?
You could find that landlord to be very cooperative too, I mean, uh, he may not even be aware there's an issue.
Right, maybe we, maybe this is a conversation we can solve it with.
Shouldn't it come from the landlord, maybe if I'm, why would it be the resident?
Well, you'd think.
That she doesn't own the property. Understood, but the landlord's responsibility is to.
Provide a spot.
Provide the spot, cause I know that we've had those cases, I know there was one on Third Street, and and that we end up putting one in. But it was a landlord who came and approached the board about putting the spot in, cause what if we put a handicap spot in and she moves, moves out next month?
So is there, is there offs, does that build, I don't know the answer, nobody probably does, is there off-street parking associated with that building?
Yes, there is, I mean, there's, there's, they park towards the backside of the building already, there's at least two or three spots, and they also park. They used to park across the way by the railroad tracks, but it's a railroad's property, so they really legally, we can't put a sign up there saying handicap. Uh, across the road.
You want me to reach out to the owner and have a conversation with the owner?
If you know, yeah, I don't even know who the owner is, Mark, so I mean. I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, to meeting her needs by any means, but it's just, uh, my concern is.
Let's start with that first.
Then we're setting precedent.
Alright, um, thank you Ben.
Second.
Second Brian, further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carries, we have an additional uh tax request refund here, can I just read this out loud?
Yeah, yeah.
This came um from Denise.
We just need the okay for you to sign it.
Oh, this is the, uh, this is okay for me to sign, could you add a motion to correct tax bill number one eighty-two, Thomas and Rosemary. Cheercello to reflect only the property tax amount of seven sixty-three and seventy-seven cents due, and omit all re-levy amounts. As this was done in air.
How do we know it's done in there?
De- Denise.
That's Denise. The request is from Denise.
The re-levy amount should have gone, uh, should have gone on Thomas Corcello Junior on Lyman Street.
Right.
But the wrong tax map number was given for the re-levy, the re-levy is being paid at at closing. Supposedly this week is the property selling, which is a good thing.
Right.
Uh, thank you, so so I I just need authority to sign off on this, is that what this is?
Yes, we just need the okay from the board that you can sign the paper.
I would make a motion that we accept this and allow Robert to, Rob to sign off on it.
Second.
Denise has already signed, and I have to sign, and you have to sign.
Okay, so second.
Back to taxation.
Second from uh Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, thank you. Uh, it was Bobby and and uh, it was Brian.
And I was like a half.
I know.
I got in there.
In terms of setting a tentative uh special meeting to uh discuss and vote on the interim. Set an agreement which should be arriving any, any day, next week um is, uh, it's not graduation week, thank God. Um, so we could look at Tuesday as as a, as a time, or Thursday, um, probably.
Thursday.
I'm not available Thursday as well.
Tuesday would be fine.
Tuesday sounds better.
That gives us enough time.
How about Wednesday?
Well, so we don't have to do, they can have their meeting and we can have ours, we can just do them at different times.
What time is our meeting?
Ours is at six.
Do they do it in here or in the office?
We're actually gonna be on a field trip and then back, so.
Oh, but Marie, you need to bring her for the meeting.
Well, we could have, we could have Judy step in.
Was this planning or zoning?
Before we make a motion, how how long's that meeting gonna last?
Well, the estimate on this one was.
Deputy Mayor was running it.
You need me to step in?
Wait, wait, this is gonna be a public meeting, and we're gonna have comments.
Absolutely.
So it's gonna take a while.
It really depends on what people have and want to say. Uh, and the next time I'm not here for meeting, I'm giving you a four-page agenda, I don't see how you do about it.
How about the nineteenth? Wednesday, the nineteenth, is that available, a date that's available?
Wednesday, the nineteenth works for me.
How about Saturday, the twenty-second?
Wednesday, Wednesday works.
I can do Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Let's do Wednesday.
Alright, well, um, then in this case, we are setting uh the special meeting uh date for Wednesday, June nineteenth. Uh, at six PM, uh, this of course is, um, assuming that we have.
Well, no, so you know, we're setting a meeting, right now, we're setting.
That's right, we're setting it, but if we need to change it because things aren't in.
If we're setting the meeting, we'll cancel it.
But also, should we also, while we're doing this now, and I know we'd have to reach out, uh, these meetings tend to draw a larger. Group of public.
I thought about moving it to the.
Location for senior center, is that something?
Think it's gonna be that many people.
Okay.
Although we can have it ready in case we need to. Um, and if we have. I don't think it's gonna be necessary.
No, that's good.
Yep.
They have air conditioning.
We do here.
Alright, do we need a motion to set that special meeting? I'm looking for a motion to set the special meeting for June nineteenth, six PM. Uh, Ben and Vanessa, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, looking for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Uh, Brian got it, Brian got it.
Second.
No, we did set this out, we went back and set that, thank you. Second by Ben, all in favor? Opposed? Uh, meeting adjourned eight forty-eights.